I don't feel like this is... Oh, there we go. All right, good evening. The time is 5:33 PM. It is Thursday, May the 12th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the City Secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum next up, citizen comment period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to please do so, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I think I just said that. I do not have any forms. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak?
I just... Everyone, as far as council members, I'm referring more to the council in regards to the meeting, May 3rd. On the agenda, agenda where council member Flores-Kale presented item 26, representing for staff to bring back information regarding obtaining conflict check software. I was disappointed with the vote. It didn't go through. I think all members, all staff members should be accountable and transparent with the technology that's nowadays used. I don't think you would have had to hire an individual to get that information that was needed. So, thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chapa. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up is considering possible action. First reading and ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending Chapter 8 Building Regulations, Article 3 Unsafe Building Abatement of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances, amending regulation of dangerous buildings and structures within the city in its entirety, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code and making amendments thereto, adopting Chapter 214 of the Texas Local Government Code by reference, amending penalty provisions, providing for inspection and securing of property, providing for diligence and notice, providing for hearings before city council, providing for appeals to district court, providing for repair and demolition of buildings, providing an effective date repeal of conflicting ordinances, savings and open meetings clauses, and providing for related matters. This one does not have a sponsor on it, but I assume this is going to be code enforcement or Scott or who's presenting on this? Amber, okay.
There we go. Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager, for the record. We were asked to update the city's current unsafe building code, and we have that in front of you today. The legislature made some changes a couple of years ago, and so now it is current and for your consideration.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by, I guess, Councilman Flores-Kale. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, gen item number two, City Manager and Department Directors will present new budget requests for operating capital budgets to the city council for consideration and discussion. Mr. Sellers.
All right, welcome, council staff. This is our first of five budget workshops. Several years ago, the council asked for this additional workshop, and each year, we have a lot of requests that come to us from each individual department. There we go. Thank you.
There you go. Yeah, this is on.
So, to begin this budget season, there are several steps that occur. I'm going to go through the presentation here in a moment, but this is the meeting where you probably won't hear me speak as much as you will in future meetings, because this is the opportunity for all of the department heads to make their budget requests without any sort of review, all right? So, it was asked several years ago, hey, we appreciate the budget that's brought forward. You know, typically balanced budget, we always get there, we have to by law, but we would like to see what the original requests were, just so we understand the extent of the needs or the desires in each department. So, this first budget kickoff, meaning this workshop, is to present what each department feels is the true need within that department. Now, this meeting isn't meant to scare anybody. The requests far, far outweigh the amount of revenue, and what we'll do over the next three or four months and meetings is with your input, with citizen input that we have through the household survey, and then internally with finance, we'll go through each department and call those requests down to what we feel can be presented to continue the same level of service delivery that citizens expect and in demand of us, but also presents a balanced budget. So, with that, you have a series of slides here on your computers or up on the screen, and for those who are at home watching, we'll go through these slides. So, we'll go through, and here's kind of our agenda, talk about objectives, priorities, new budget needs, desires.
Yes, Scott. Going to interrupt you.
Yes, please.
Is there any objection to the item we just voted on being finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Just steal this one more time. No problem. Capital Improvement Projects, and just for the council's understanding, we'll get through this in the presentation, but remember, there are multiple funds, maybe 30-some-odd funds when all is said and done, that make up the budget of the city, right? So, the general fund being the main fund funded by property tax, sales tax, and fees, fines and fees, but then water and sewer fees are in a separate utility fund, right? So, those are not taxpayer-driven revenues. Those are customer revenues, customers of those utilities. So, and we'll go through other funds like the Capital Improvement Fund, which is a separate fund that is seeded with monies from each individual fund as well. We'll also talk a little bit about the November 22 bond election for roads. The engineering companies that have been selected are actually on the 20, or the 17th council agenda, so this next Tuesday, council will have an opportunity to review each of those proposals and get those projects moving forward. Key dates for budget development and direction for '23. So, the objectives for today, again, first and foremost, we want to get council direction on everything that you hear. Now, again, there are going to be certain requests that are high priorities, some that are lesser priority but still important. So, even though we may not bring back an expenditure in the future, it doesn't mean it's not important, it's just not as high as a priority as some other expenditures, and that's just, you know, the budget process each year. So, again, the number that we'll go over, don't let it scare you. We will have each department speak to their needs. So, number one, from a priority standpoint, we want to implement what the strategic plan is and also the council's goal for the November 22 GO bond election. Again, we've already looked at the major roads. We will have an opportunity as we get what we'll call a 10% design from our engineering firms by July timeframe and have an opportunity for council to look at each of those estimates and determine which roads to bring back, also with their potential funding obligations. The engineering and designing construction of certain capital improvements, we want to make sure that those high priority projects for the council are also high priority in our capital improvement plan. Our beautification plan, we have continued to make that a high priority and want to ensure that that's still a priority for the council, and in this budget, you'll see that it is... You know, there are a lot of beautification initiatives that we'll be rolling forward into this next budget proposal. We do continue to strive to be, and I believe that we are, the gold standard of Hayes County. We want to maintain that designation, that standard, and continue that throughout central Texas. And then, the elimination of blight and dilapidated structures is also part of our beautification initiatives, but it's an increased attention to code enforcement. Continuing on, we will now get into our individual departments. So, they're in alphabetical order, not prioritizing any department over another. So, the first department is the Building Department, and with that, we will turn the time over to Tim Cropley.
Hold on to Gary.
Oh, Gary, sorry. Gary. There we go. Saw Tim standing up. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so, my name is Gary Stubbins. I am the bill official for the city. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gary Stubbins. I'm the bill official for the City of Kyle. On my budget requests, I have four items. One, number one being a permit coordinator. We have two permit coordinators now, and we really need to have another one. The numbers show that we have been, the amount of permits that have been issued over the last couple of years has really increased exponentially, and then again, the number of inspections also. So, just between last year and this year, we've had well over, I would say, 18% increase, and the year before was even a 39% increase. So, I noticed that when the, one of the clerks does go on vacation or calls in sick for any reason, the other clerk really has to hustle to keep up, and a lot of times, they're actually behind. The other item I'm asking for is the training and certifications. We do have requirements for certifications, and we also have requirements for CUs. We do have a rather large, rather small budget on that, so there's always stuff coming down the pike, and I'm big on education. I think it's important that we do have certified people going out there and doing the inspections. I'd like to get everybody fully certified and also to maintain their CUs. We also have on there that we have intergov software user licenses. We had the third parties, we have ATS, we have SafeBuild. They added two inspectors apiece because we have so many inspections as of, let me see, as of this year, we're projected to have over 40,000 inspections done, so we need extra help. We rely on them heavily, and both of them decided to add on two more inspectors. They haven't started at this point in time, but we do have, we do have SafeBuild. Their inspectors do have the licenses to be able to go out there and hit the ground running. We're working on ATS as we speak, but this is a yearly fee that's increased, though we'll keep on going on. I think it averages out to $800 and, no, excuse me, $588 a year on that. My final request was for food and meals. I have a rather small budget on that, but I think it's important, the reason I want to increase this is because I believe in the core values of Kyle, and I think it's important to have a team-building events and like to be able to have the opportunity to, maybe every six months, to bring the team out, tell them how much I appreciate what they do. They work very, very hard, and to have that opportunity to show my gratefulness to them, I think that'd be good to have that opportunity and have that. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I just, could you repeat how many employees are currently in that department?
I have two inspectors, and I also have two permit coordinators, and we have a third, the third party, we have ATS, has five inspectors, and SafeBuild has two, and each one of those is adding two more inspections, so we have a total of 11 inspectors and two in-house.
Two in-house, and so nine?
The ATS has five. They're going to add two more, so that'd be seven, and then ATS now, SafeBuild has two, so that'd be nine, and then 11. So, yeah, oh, no, excuse me, I take that back. ATS will have five. They have three right now, so we'll have a total of 11, third party and in-house.
And that's just inspectors, but not all of those?
Correct, just inspectors. So, then we have two permit coordinators also.
Okay, could you briefly just give an explanation of what you guys, what your duties are as inspectors, as building, in your department?
They basically do the exact same thing as ATS. ATS, we're a combination city, so basically, the third party is fully certified right across the board. They're certified in building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And to be a plumbing inspector, you also have to have a state certification. That's one of the big requirements on that. My inspectors are certified in certain areas. We do not have a certified plumbing inspector. We will once one of my inspectors, who has provided all the hours to be able to take the state test, he just hasn't had the state get back in touch with him as far as when he's going to actually do it. But as soon as they get in touch with him, he passes the test, he'll be a licensed state inspector for plumbing.
So, you guys permit all the new development here in Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, mayor and council, before we go to the next department, I just point a clarification. What you will see from each department is their new needs in addition to what's already in their base budget. So, they're not going to be discussing their base budget, they'll be only discussing what their new needs are. So, with that, our next department is city council. Want to do that?
So, as discussed in a recent council meeting by the council, this next budget will have a separate cost center or line items for the mayor and the six council members. The approved budget for this fiscal year will then be allocated between all seven. So, that is up to council to determine how to do that. We're just taking that number from this year, and we're moving it forward, and we're going to split it seven ways. So, the council will have an opportunity to discuss this and determine how you want those dollars allocated, whether you want the same budget amount revised, et cetera. And then, you'll see under number five here, the line item budget includes these six items, the compensation for the charter, any travel that is intended to be made, your memberships and subscriptions, mileage reimbursement, office supplies, and food and meals. So, as you all are having those conversations, those are the line items.
Generally not doing hands-on workshops, so you can just butt in, but we are, butt in or speak, but please be brief.
Okay, so, to confirm, this is 224,928 more than we had last year?
That is the current approved budget. So, basically, what we're saying is we will start the budget process by allocating the base budget between the seven cost centers, and then city council, if y'all want to amend those line items, we can do that up or down.
And does that include the $1,000 monthly stipend? Or not stipend, salary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Next department, city manager's office.
Okay, so the city manager's office is not just me, it's just labeled that way, so it includes myself and the assistant city managers, and as you can see here, there are other positions that are included within the overall office of or department of the city manager. So, these requests are predominantly from the ACMs, and I'm going to have them share those requests. The first is James.
I'm looking at that list, and I'm pretty sure they're all James.
I believe they're all James.
Yeah, I think they're all James. So, James, or for the record, the ACM evidently, like the OI state. Mayor and council, really what I have for you, before I get into what these are, I just want to kind of take a moment of privilege and hit a narrative, which is, when I walked in the door of City Hall in 2006, my job description was very simple, and I'm not exaggerating. I literally was told, your job description is go find stuff that needs to be done and do it. And I have effectively been doing that for the last 15 years. Now, granted, if you read my job description, it's gotten much longer and verbose now, but at the end of the day, that's effectively what I still do. Many of the divisions and the departments that y'all know and have come to love have been built because of work that has happened from my office, HR, planning, IT, engineering, GIS, the list goes on and on and on and on and on. Well, tonight, I guess this time last year, I was advocating for two new ACMs. You asked me what my opinions were. Now, I'm telling you, after going out and looking for more things that need to be done, we need more help in the sense of highly skilled, trained managerial-type candidates that can be brought into our organization to do the same things that I was brought in to do, which is to go find things that need to be done and do them. There's a number of things that we could do better in transparency, and there's a number of things that we could do better in accountability, there's a number of things that we could do better in systems. But whenever I look at my Jennifers of the world or my Previzes of the world, and I say, hey, we need to do X, you know, and they just kind of crumble because of the amount of work that there is. And that's where having a strike team of very capable and talented individuals that we can recruit, master-level type students, master-level type candidates, if you will, to bring them into the organization as effectively like department head trainees, ACM trainees, and use that skill set for a finite amount of time. It's how I became an ACM. I was brought into the profession by a city manager who hired me as an administrative assistant to the city manager and told me that he wanted me to work for him for two years to learn everything there is to know and to leave and go become an assistant city manager or city manager somewhere else. And effectively, that model is repeated time and time and time again in our profession, and that's what I've put here together for you. Now, I have two management analysts and two local government fellows. What those are, a management analyst is effectively someone who has completed their master's degree in public administration or an equivalent-type degree. They are typically very new to the profession, younger professionals, excited, lots of energy, wanting to get their, you know, hands dirty, roll up their sleeves and get into the organization and fix things. Local government fellows are highly sought-after fellows. It's like any type of fellowship that you might get through the International City Manager Association. So, you apply for this program, you go through a rigorous selection process, and then they select fellows, and they look for communities to place them, to come work. You might pull from anywhere across the United States, potentially internationally, but usually it's anywhere across the United States. I'm looking for diversity. I'm looking for diversity in gender and ethnicity and in the way people think. I'm looking for a group that is large enough to be able to make a difference, to get in here day one and to do the work that needs to be done. That's what the request is for management analysts and local government fellows. The next one, the grant administrator. So, grants are evidently extremely niche, and the more that I have been working with them, the more I realize that we are woefully undereducated and knowledgeable in what it actually takes to manage grants. After having spoken to some folks who do this professionally, it is painfully evident that we need actual grant professional, not someone that we assign to do grant administration because it really is a niche work. So, that request is added in here as well for the number of grants that we're actually pursuing. Some of these are support costs for the positions because one of the things we haven't really been doing a whole lot of is taking our junior staff and developing our junior staff, taking them to conferences with us so they get to network and they get to be exposed to the same things that we're exposed to, they get mentorship. We haven't really been doing that in the level that I would like to see, so there are costs associated in there. And then, there are actually two other departments that I have put in here that I wanted to talk to you about. So, one of, the first one is item number five, which is the Community Engagement Software System. That I pulled, technically, it's communications, but I pulled it because a year or two ago, when we first started talking about the work order system and then the 3-1-1, which would let citizens submit work orders. There was also another component, which was the public outreach, gauging public opinion, being able to determine whether or not things are trending positive or negative based off of social media and the other things that are out there. So, this is really the third leg of that thing that I told you that I would be delivering on. So, that's what the Community Engagement Software is. And then, number six is the SharePoint Record Retention System Consulting. So, one of the things that y'all are becoming more and more increasingly aware of is that record retention matters, and there's a lot of people creating a lot of digital records right now. And our SharePoint is part of our Office 365 program, you know, our package that we use, is part of our tools, and it effectively is the cloud, if you will, of all of our storage. However, we don't actually know how to use the tools and leverage them all the way that we really could because none of us are actual professionals in SharePoint or actual professionals in whatever the case may be. What SharePoint can do, if you actually set it up correctly, is it can timestamp documents, it can identify what type of record retention schedules those documents need, it can move them into folders, it can actually highlight and identify things that need to be looked at for destruction or for removal and so on and so forth. So, that would be a dramatic improvement for the city secretary's office, but also for the organization as a whole, because right now, we're just not doing records retention. And you'll hear, you know what I mean, we do records retention, but we're not, we're not really doing records retention the right way, in my opinion. So, you'll hear from the city secretary too, you know, asking for help and assistance in that area. The laptops are for the positions, the certification programs are for junior development, junior staff development, and then the Adobe and Ring Central and Office 365. I wanted to be as complete as I possibly could in the actual cost of adding things. So, that concludes the items that are on the slide.
Amber, did you want to add your items?
I have zero items.
Oh, okay.
Amber's like, zero. Jerry's like, nope.
Questions for James? Thank you, James. City Secretary's Office.
Jennifer Holm, City Secretary. So, I too will take a moment of privilege. I've been the city secretary since the middle of fiscal year 16, and from that time, I want to just give you a little bit of background about how every aspect of my department has grown enormously since that time. So, for a first example, in fiscal years 17 and 18, we had 30 city council meetings per year total. This year, we're estimating 62. I attend every single one of those meetings. I also attend Ethics Commission and Tours Board meetings that are not included in this number. The other thing is that the average items per meeting went from between 20 and 25 to this year, up through April, we were averaging 35 items per meeting. That equates into, so back to the meetings, that's going to be minutes, that's agenda postings, that's all these coordinations of calendar invites and everything else, but it's also, these number of items equates to records. So, every single item that y'all approve, it has a record that has to be signed, it has to be, some of them have to be recorded with the county, so it has increased dramatically over the last five years or so. Our open records requests, in fiscal year 2017, we had just under 200 open records requests, and these are just the cities, not including PD at all. So, my office is over all open records requests that are not PD requests. So, we had just under 200 back in 2017. Today, we are at about 420. under two hundred back in twenty seventeen. Uh, today we are at about four twenty-five per year. And not only that, but they've increased as far as like people asking for digital things like emails, text messages, those take significant time to go through, redact. Um, it's a very specialized process. You have to know all the laws that have to do with that. So with that, I'm asking for, and back to James's point, let's talk about SharePoint and records retention. Um, each of our departments has a liaison. They all come to me for training and for like how we're going to process those records and what the proper way is to get rid of them. And anytime somebody isn't sure what a particular record schedule should follow, um, because the records, it's kind of, they're, they're encompassing and so sometimes it's hard to determine whether it's this record schedule or another one. Um, so all of those come through my office and, um, with the SharePoint thing, there's also an ability. So right now, I go through and put those in the proper folder that they belong in. There's some room for error, um, human error and everything like that, where if we do the SharePoint software, they'll be able to identify certain things and do things more automated, which would reduce the, you know, existence of human error. If it doesn't, if it's not able to figure it out, then it'll go into a folder where I would then go and assign it the proper schedule. And then I can tweak the software so that next time it'll look for those type of things and put it in the right folder. So that's some of what it is. We need, um, I've, other departments, especially the building department, has asked me if we're going to have a person that just does open records so that they can be more of the contact that can even train in our various department's software, so they can pull those records themselves instead of having the individual departments all having to pull those records in addition to their normal, everyday duties. Um, so with that, we have a records officer, uh, which would be kind of a lead, an open records clerk, which would be, um, like a secondary. They would handle all the routine things and then the officer would be more of a specialized person to deal with things that aren't routine. Um, same with the records retention officer, a lead and then a clerk underneath them. Uh, the records scanning, we have, just the city secretary's office has a hundred boxes in storage that we're just not able to pull and, and deal with. So in addition to that, every other department has boxes that are like historical records that are in storage. We need to get those all online. So that is what the record scanning is for. Um, our agenda minutes and, uh, agenda minutes software, we are, this program that we're currently using is outdated. It's going away. They're not updating it and so we've got to find something better. And then fireproof safe. So we have certain records that are permanent, our, uh, resolutions, ordinances, um, even our like deeds and easements that are permanent. We have them stacked on top of fireproof safes right now. So I'm asking for some more fireproof safes so we can have those safeguarded. And then memberships, we would probably, depending on which, um, if y'all approve some more staff, we'll also have some other support costs that are not included here. Does anyone have any questions for me?
To be for the record, um, referencing the salaries on all of these, is this the average for these type of clerks to have at this entry level, uh, positions? Eighty thousand, the other one sixty-seven, the another one's eighty. Just trying to get a ballpark figure.
These would be, um, these include the soft costs for like insurance and other benefits. It's not just the salary.
Yeah, and that's true, going through this whole presentation. So the salary amount you'll see is salary.
That includes the insurance and everything to talk about. Okay.
Well, to, actually to add to that, is there like a standard? So are the salaries being proposed by each department, like vetted through HRs or some kind of standard for, or, or some departments maybe bumping up or?
Sandra's online.
She's online?
Just, probably good to know.
She's online.
Mayor.
Hi.
We have used, uh, the, the classification that currently City of Kyle uses for supervisory level positions, for technician level positions, for clerks. So as you see through across the city requests from each department, if it's a clerk, it's pretty much the same across the board. If it's a supervisor, it's pretty much the same across the board.
I think in, in past, uh, budgets, we've kind of asked to see what the base salary would be and then we would go from there to kind of see like how much it is per hour that they're receiving or like if it's a base forty thousand, then of course the additional. But it looks like here, and it's showing the total number, but it doesn't really show the base salary.
And we'll show that in the next budget work session when you go through the line item budget. For every position, you will see their base pay, what their payroll taxes are, what their health insurance is, all of the breakdown will be there.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, um, do we have, uh, the room for more safes?
We do. Um, we have a downtown, a downstairs storage room that right now it's, to be honest, it's kind of junky.
Okay, what?
But we do have space for those. Um.
And how many are you looking at, uh, purchasing? How many safes are you?
Two.
Two? Uh, how much, would we have room for a couple more? We decided to go down the road. I'm just thinking about what the space, how big the space is and how many we could add.
So I could look into that. We do have, in that room, we have several file cabinets that are empty, but they're, um, they're not fireproof, you know, fire resistant or anything like that.
So, so my, my concern is that you're talking about having, uh, stuff stacked on top of the safes. Once we purchase these, will that fill that up and then have that need again?
Maybe. I, I'm not sure, but I think it will get us through this next budget year, um, for sure. And then we can reevaluate then. Part of also with this backlog of records that we have is that that room is kind of a mess. And so I need somebody that can come in and really just focus on nothing but historical records. So that room, our offsite storage, um, and then start coordinating with all the departments on retention policies. Historically, things were filed based on like project based and not document based. So several, like, there might be a file that has multiple documents. I'll use elections as an example. Some election documents you only keep for six months after the election. Some election documents you have to keep permanently and some are like two years. Well, they would take the whole election and put it in one file and, and drop it in there. So we need to go back through and pull out the stuff that we shouldn't even have anymore and just keep the stuff that we do have. And that's for every single department at the city.
Okay. I was just trying to be proactive, but it sounds like you've already got plans. So, thank you.
Next we have our communications department. I believe we have Rachel that's going to be presenting.
Hello, Rachel Sanye, uh, interim director of communications. Uh, so for our first budget line item is to reclass our videographer to senior videographer and then, uh, as well as reclass our marketing and multimedia specialist to senior graphic designer. Uh, both these positions are overseeing crew, uh, interns, work with vendors. So we feel it's fit to reclass them in that way. And then our next budget line item is for three interns for the communications department, uh, specifically one for video, photography, and then, uh, marketing. Um, we've seen a lot of benefits with working with paid interns in the past, uh, both for them and for our department. So we'd love to continue doing that in the future. Uh, we're also looking at increasing our budget line item from, uh, twenty twenty, uh, by two hundred dollars for training and conferences. Uh, this is specifically to recertify and certify to, uh, drone flying certifications for our staff members. Um, and then our next budget line item is for, uh, video production and graphic design services. Um, this can include anything from like a hired crew, whenever one videographer or photographer won't do that event, you know, like pie in the sky, things like that that require lots of coverage, uh, as well as things like video props for any of the productions we put out from the communications department. Uh, and then we're also including a, uh, increase for printing and services. Specifically, uh, we want to send out two different postcards throughout the year to residents' mailboxes that will just include things like, you know, events, resources, programs that come directly to their mailbox instead of, you know, online, social media, things like that, as well as a, uh, bilingual resource guide for twenty-three. Uh, and we would also like to, uh, up our advertising and marketing budget. Uh, this will include special events, marketing and advertising such as pie in the sky and things like that, festivals, as well as, uh, regular city events, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and then we have a groundbreaking and ribbon cutting budget of fifteen thousand, uh, for twenty-three. We have the public safety center, uh, ribbon cutting coming up in twenty twenty-three. So we'd really like to, uh, give that a nice welcome to our community. And, uh, the other two budget items at the bottom here are camera lighting and accessories as well as audio equipment. We have a city staff member that's been using primarily their own equipment. So we'd really like to have that purchased by the city and insured by the city if anything should happen to it. Uh, and then our last bottom, uh, budget line is a, uh, increase in just support costs. Um, this really just covers, uh, IT software that we use, programs, um, things like that, that we use to put together newsletters, graphics, all that sort of thing to disseminate information to the public. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have them.
Yes. Okay. So you guys are asking for an additional one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Can you tell me what your current budget is?
Yeah, Andy's looking at it.
Okay, while you're looking it up, I'll just ask my other question. Um, the three interns, what is the timeframe that they're interning with the city?
So, uh, we've had summer internships that turned into longer than summer internships. Um, but generally it starts out with a minimum of like two to three months and, uh, can progress from there if they're really great or, you know, just something along those lines. I'm seeing a lot of these.
Um, my concern for that is as a previous intern, two thousand dollars doesn't seem like much for a couple of months. So, um.
It, it's definitely like part-time based in that sense, but yeah.
Okay. Okay. And if you could tell me the current budget?
Yes, the approved budget and round numbers is four hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Four hundred and seventy-six. So. I just want to confirm what the new budget for this year would be. It's, um, four seven six plus one forty-four. So six hundred and twenty thousand-ish?
These are very raw numbers at this stage.
Okay, I, I'm just, um, curious. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question for Rachel? Okay, thank you, Rachel. Next is, uh, Diana with the economic development department.
Good evening, mayor and council. Diana Torres, Director of Economic Development for the record. Um, you will see before you tonight, um, actually a much larger request than you normally see from, uh, our department, um, but you'll see several reasons for that. One is the, uh, strategic plan is now outdated by nearly two years. Uh, we put that off last year because of the uncertainty of the comp plan and also because of the uncertainty of the markets with COVID. Wanted to give that some time to kind of settle down. Um, so kind of priced that out with communities that have done them recently and that's where I came up with this budget amount. We are requesting a, uh, one FTE as a project manager. And that person would be doing, um, going through all the hundred and forty projects that we have in our software, uh, system and contacting them, making sure that they're still moving forward, um, cycling out any of the ones that are either, um, expired or have located somewhere else that we're not aware of, um, that kind of thing, uh, basically would be my backup. So of the three staff that we have right now, we have one that is, um, pretty much administrative, uh, as well as responding to RFIs and RFPs, which we're averaging probably, um, five to ten a week, uh, where before COVID, we were averaging maybe two or three a week. Pre-COVID, total number of projects would average somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. And again, we are over a hundred and forty projects right now that we're working. So obviously there are things that we would like to do better to keep up with the, all of these active projects and make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. But we're kind of in fire, um, mode, which is the biggest fire for this week or today even, as the nature of economic development is. Um, so we would love to have someone that could come in and help us keep those moving along and not let them, uh, drop through. Um, the next item that we're requesting is in membership dues. So this three thousand dollar request is a difference for Team Texas. Last year we upped the three thousand dollar, which is just a base member level, to five thousand, which would have become a bronze player. Well, after we had budget approved, they changed their membership structures and so now there is no five thousand dollar membership. You are either a base member and you have to pay to play, which is kind of how it is referred to, um, in the organization. And any event, anything that they host, if you want to go to a trade show, if you want to go to the site selection consultant's events, you have to pay separately. So it adds up, um, on top of that. If you are the bronze membership level, that adds some, um, benefits, including five registrations to different Team Texas events, which are about fifteen hundred dollars apiece. So that's a seventy-five hundred dollar value. It includes the road shows and trade shows that you can choose from. Uh, one registration to Team Texas events that are, um, the bigger events for like site selection consultants. They have something called, um, Party Under the Stars at one of the big, um, trade shows where they invite site selection consultants that are in key target market industries and you're there to network with them. Uh, and then you have an option to participate in other all Team Texas events throughout the year. So that's, those are the benefits in addition to the base, um, levels. So that's what we need to consider for this year. Food and beverages, we are requesting a, a small increase of one thousand fifty-six dollars. Um, prior to COVID, we were hosted, very nicely hosted by Seton Ascension Hayes for our board meetings. Um, we meet during the day because the majority of our, uh, board members are business owners and that is the most convenient time for them to get away is, is during lunch. And Seton would cover the costs of all those meals prior to, uh, this request. So, um, right now we're kind of, um, looking for, we're bootstrapping it. Um, we had a meeting this week that we utilized the Lehman Culinary Arts students, which I would highly recommend. Um, they do an amazing job and we had the meeting at Lehman School. So these are the kinds of things that we would like to continue, um, through, through the next year. There's a five hundred dollar mileage increase and that is because, uh, our BRE and workforce development, um, uh, manager is now doing a lot more direct meetings and traveling to the employers and doing tours and, and surveys and things like that. So that's just a little bit of an increase to cover that mileage cost. And then the last thing that's on here is fifty thousand dollars to determine feasibility of whether Kyle needs a business slash industrial park, whichever term you want to use. Um, and if it does, where should that be? That's all I have.
It should also be noted that that fifty thousand is the city's match portion for a federal planning grant, economic development, administration planning grant that some of y'all heard about in Washington. So this is the city's match for a much larger study.
Probably about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar study, correct?
Correct.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So, um, since we didn't do one last year and it was my first year here, could you just give a brief description as to what the strategic plan entails?
Sure. So it, the, the cost is going to differentiate depending on how much community involvement. If you want to have meetings to get community impact and things like that, that kind of bumps it up a little bit. So, um, that may be like a fifty thousand dollar, um, range. However, However, the strategic plan identifies what your target markets should be, what is appropriate for your community, and what will be embraced by your community, what is desired by the leadership. It goes into data research and determines of the people that are living in Kyle, especially those that are leaving every day, what jobs are they working at? So it considers that when it's determining your target markets. It does an in-depth demographic review. They do a metric layout that shows, these are your strategies, these are the goals under the strategies. These are your short-term goals, which is usually your year one, two, three-ish, and then years three to five are your long-term goals. And it will put a price tag on each of those. It will identify what community partners we should be working with that perhaps we're not. Trying to think what I'm missing. It is, it is a very deep and full-encompassing strategic plan. It is on our website right now, our current one, for anybody that is interested. It is actually very readable. It is like a bajillion pages long, but it's very readable, and it has all kinds of information in there. I'd be happy to bring, bring that back with each detailed section the next meeting, if you like.
How old is our, the one that's on the website?
It was done in two thousand fifteen, adopted in two thousand sixteen. We're a much different community now than we were then, so we have been looking at it as a living, working, flexible document. So we keep a very close eye on trends and market trends and kind of have been either updating our target markets based on that or kind of identifying subcategories to those original target markets to kind of add.
Out of curiosity, the demographic review, can you, what all does that entail?
The biggest part of that is going to be what has changed in Kyle since we did the last one? What is, what does our community snapshot look like? By ethnicity, by what jobs people work, by average home incomes, and all the information that they would need to go in and determine what is going to help bring this community up from a, what is still kind of looked at as a veteran community to a full-service community where people don't have to leave every day.
Okay, and am I correct in remembering that you guys currently have three people for your department?
Yes, you're correct.
So if you add in, you just have four with this one?
Right.
Okay.
So what we have right now is, as I mentioned earlier, the administrative role that also replies to RFIs. We have an economic development, business retention, and expansion, and workforce manager. That's a very long title, yeah. And then myself. So what is kind of hurting in the way of being able to really separate roles is that those other two are having to help with project management. And then their essential job functions are kind of, you know, being pushed in priority.
Okay, do you know what your budget for last year was?
Per Vez, do you have that?
Yeah, we're looking at it.
Does that include three eighty payments or not?
No.
At one point, we were including the three eighty payments in our department budget.
So four thirty-one, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have the Emergency Management Department. This is a new department this year, and so we've got, William.
Howdy, everyone. William Paisteboche for the record. Sorry, is this thing broadcasting? William Paisteboche for the record. So I'm coming before you. This is a new department. Everything's kind of upfront, so don't be alarmed by the large figure at the bottom. A big portion of this is covered under the construction bond for the public safety building, ideally, and a breakdown can be provided in the future. What I am specifically asking for are two staff members, a deputy and a planner. I'm starting a plan. I am trying to catch up on grants. I was chasing down HM, yeah, Hazard Mitigation Program grants for James earlier. And you can actually see on there, I do not believe that for this year, we can successfully get a storm shelter reimbursement program that is grant-funded, so I included it in the budget ask. It's the Storm Shelter Reimbursement Program. I modeled it after the existing one, which is fifty percent to a cap of five thousand for an estimated seventeen homes and a hundred and seventy home community. The expectation is about ten percent adoption rate of this program. Much like the FEMA model, citizens would have to first construct to our standard, to the P three sixty-one standard, which is set forth by FEMA as well as our engineers, and then submit the proof of this construction to us for reimbursement. We don't cover the whole cost, but it's to incentivize private construction. We did pursue with James's help and with the help of the planners and economic development to figure out, can we set up community shelters? They do cost a bit more because they house more people, but there is a guideline of no more than point five miles or a five-minute walk, which is about point two-five miles from the intended audience. So I would literally look at Quail Ridge. If I put it at the south end, which is the only land available, which is also a flood zone, so that would create its own construction problems, the people at the north end of Quail Ridge would be, by this standard, unable to access that in time in the event of a tornado. So we deem the community model to be a little bit ineffective. I'm asking for vehicles. Yesterday, I was up at the state. I was at TDM, which is on the northeast part of Austin. I received notice from Chief Barnett that there was an incident going on that may result in the evacuation of Simon Middle School. Came running down here at eighty miles an hour in my personal vehicle, abandoning that meeting to try and make it to the command post to lend what assistance I could. I would like to have a vehicle that would, one, not be mine, but, two, people would move over for and let me get there a little bit faster. Another thing is just supply. Everything else is basically just support supplies. You have radios, you have the usual accoutrements of an emergency vehicle. The laptops are what you guys issued me. It's the exact same model according to Mr. Dawson from IT. And I believe that's an accurate encompassment of all of our costs. You have certain things like training certificates. Emergency managers come from a very diverse array of professional backgrounds. I came from law enforcement. A number come from fire, EMS, project management, CPAs, military officials, and with the exception of military officials, oftentimes, there is a cost to keeping up your certifications. Like T-Cole is not easy to keep up. Your EMT advanced is not easy to keep up. So in order to attract the best talent, I believe that we should offer a method or at least a roadway to maintain your certifications and keep that level of expertise and training. The others are things like membership in the International Association of Emergency Managers, which is the leading edge, the premier agency. We do have in Texas EMAT, which is the Emergency Management Association of Texas. They want to become the competitor to I A E M. They are fairly new. They offer the Texas Emergency Manager Certificate, which is seen as equivalent to the C E M offered by I A E M. But that's, my budget is including a lot of these things, and I feel like I'm getting into nitty-gritty here, so are there any questions I can answer? Yes, sir.
All right. Referencing the two job descriptions for the deputy coordinator and planner, what would be the difference between both of those?
The deputy emergency management coordinator would fulfill the same duties that I would. If I'm tied up trying to get radiological equipment and HMPG grant stuff while I'm at the state and a fire kicks off down here, they can effectively slot in for me, and I can effectively slot in for them. We would divide duties between, I'm keeping up the emergency operations plan and all twenty-four annexes. We can divide those up when it comes to liaising with the hazmat team, fire, et cetera. So we should be able to interchange very easily. The planner is not an emergency response function. That's why I did not ask for a vehicle for them. They would be tackling the paperwork. They'd be tackling grant cycles. Ideally, they would be getting us ahead of things like notice of funding opportunities for HMPG. That's, that way, we won't miss out, like we did this year, on trying to get applications out to citizenry to build their shelters to apply to us for reimbursement.
Which one of these would work with the state and the county to build an emergency plan from within?
That would be my job, the deputy's job, and the planner can assist when it comes to record retention and other sort of administrative tasks.
So the, the EOC software, the one point eight million that's projected to come out of the thirty-seven million? Is, so we have the space there for that already? Can you just speak to the financial, how that's coming out, or? Is there room? Is this projected to come forward? Because we should probably be, if we're doing that, I don't know that it can even wait until the budget season because we're building it right now.
Correct, so that's, that is part of the FFNE budget for the center. We don't have those numbers yet. So this is to make you aware of what the needs are for the facility. We're going to try to massage that into that FFNE total line item. There's, there's a good amount there for, sorry, furniture fixtures and equipment for the facility, and, you know, we'll make as much of this a priority as possible.
Can, can we get some kind of, not now, but kind of an email update on just the budget of where that is, including the FFNE and then with this context, because I, do you think this is a priority?
Yeah, it just so happens that we have Bob Farmer, who is coming to present Tuesday night to council about this.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Leon Barba in the Engineering Department.
Good afternoon, everybody. Leon Barba, city engineer. Council members, I have two items up there. One is the traffic engineer. Has anybody noticed the issues we're having with traffic lately? If you haven't, let me know where you've been so I can go there too, but anyway. What is a traffic engineer? Maybe I can hide the tunnel or something, but anyway.
There we go, a vibe trap. Love it.
What is a traffic engineer? Sometimes people ask me what the traffic engineer do. The traffic engineer is not going to tell you how deep of a structure you need for your road. They're going to tell you about your lanes. They're going to look at your areas. We have a lot of accidents. What can they do to help improve the safety? Do we put more signs? Do we move, widen the lanes? Do we narrow the lanes? What do we do there? So that's what your traffic engineer does. They help you with your, somebody wants stop signs in their neighborhood. They're going to look at it very closely, make sure that we put the stop signs up where they belong, where they're warranted. They're going to look at the plans that we get from these developers. What, what's the impact to our roadway system? What can they do to help improve the traffic that's flowing around that subdivision? And what's the impact going to be to that subdivision when we handle that traffic to those adjacent roads? So that's what the traffic engineer does. He's not going to be designing a road and telling you how deep of a pavement structure you need. So that's what the traffic engineer does. When we start taking over the traffic signals, that's another one of their duties, that they're going to have to start coordinating with with Tech dot and with Public Works to start making sure that there's certain cities just to the north of us that I go through, there's four traffic signals. On the Sunday morning at eight o'clock, I went through all four traffic signals. I got stopped at each and every one. Shouldn't be that way. You should be able to flow right on through. And that's what they, that's what the traffic engineer looks at. On the second item that you've got up there, that's the pavement assessment study. The last study we did was back in two thousand sixteen. We had about a hundred and forty centerline miles of road. It cost us eighty-one thousand dollars. That was six years ago. We should be looking at our materials every year. We should be looking at the city four to five years overall. We should be looking at the roads to assess what kind of condition they are in. The, what, what good does that do you? Well, when we have roads that are in the eighty to a hundred, the scores are from zero to a hundred. Typically, we'd like to see our roads in, say, from the eighties to a hundreds. That's a really good road. So we'd like to see between eighty to a hundred. So when we have those eighty to a hundred, we need to preserve those roads and make sure that they stay good. So what we do is preventive maintenance. That's what we look at when we get our pavement assessment. Which of our roads are in the eighties? Which ones can we use a seal or microseal or whatever? That's what we look at, and that's what we use. We, we're just about at the end of our five-year plan, so we really need to get that updated. And the reason I put in two fifty, you would say, well, you had eighty-one in two thousand sixteen. We only had a hundred and forty miles. We have increased to a hundred and eighty-one centerline miles. That's almost a thirty percent increase in roadway network. But even then, two hundred and fifty, that sounds like an awful lot. The reason I went up to the higher number, and we can look at adjusting that down if we need to. The reason I did that is because not only do you get a survey of your roads, you can also get a survey of your, your stop signs, your, all your signs that you have, your striping. You can get them to measure your sidewalks for you. They won't tell you the conditions of sidewalks, but at least you'll know you'll have blank miles of sidewalks that you have to maintain. So we can add that to the survey when they do that survey for a road assessment. So that's the reason I put that number in, just to make sure if we wanted to pick up that extra stuff, we could be able to do that. So those are my two items, but before I turn it over for questions, Amber and I have been talking about succession plan for my position. The, I'm looking at, my plan was to, right now, I've got seven reports. Typically, you'd like to see three to fives, what I've read, for people reporting to a certain supervisor. So I've got seven reports. If I was given this extra position, now I'm up to eight reports. It's kind, it's a little too many for me to handle at one time, be able to manage effectively. So what I'm proposing for the next year's budget is, not next year's, but the year after that, is a city engineer, assistant city engineer position. So that's my one-year and two-year plan that I have. If I get taken out by a train, I need somebody to be able to take up, take up and just keep running with the department because we have too many things going on that we just can't leave it just to one person to handle all the thirty, forty projects that we have.
And Mayor and Council, if I could, I would like to ask that he put it in this year's budget. He doesn't want to ask for too much because that's Leon, but he really needs the help, and we really would be in a bad spot if, if we didn't have Leon. He just does so much for the city, and so we need somebody learning what he does, and so we can carry on the same level of excellence that Leon shows every day.
By the way, we lost one of our engineers. He went on to bigger and better things, forty percent increase, and we couldn't match it. We begged, we offered, countered, and we still lost him, so he's, he's leaving at the end of this month. So whatever work he's doing, we've tried to spread it out amongst the rest of us that are left in the department to try to handle it, so we're, we're struggling right now.
And then with the road bond projects?
Oh, my gosh.
Going to talk about later. Yeah, we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah, Leon, thanks for thinking about, being proactive about, if anything happens to you. God hopes nothing happens to you tomorrow because we would be in a pickle, but definitely, I like where you're going with that. I'd love to see it in this year's budget, just to make sure that we are covered. And the other thing is, those lights that are programmed that way probably deter speeders just saying that. Because if it flowed, they probably flowed a little too fast, but usually what happens when you see those lights. But yeah, definitely, I'd love to see it in this year's budget and, and hopefully we can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one. Okay, so if we're looking at getting a, adding a traffic engineer, we're more likely in the next year or two, probably need to add an assistant to go along with them, plus extra, like a vehicle and so forth. So right now, what you're asking for is just the one position for now. And then in the next year to be able to budget for a second? You think probably in about two years, you're going to be, this, we're going to need to have another engineer too?
And this will be an assistant city engineer?
Okay.
That way, I could, some of the reports that I have now, they would work under that assistant city engineer position.
Okay, because, because I do feel that it is important with the amount of traffic that we're having and the problems that we're having and just the challenges that everybody is facing. You know, there could be some lights that are not in sync. There could be roads and brought this up to council a reason the other day on BB that there was a large crater when you pulled in. Thank you to whoever it was who was able to get that fixed. So it's be able to find those little loopholes, you know, through the end, to be able to help get, get, get the city back on track. So I think it's to the point where we, we really need to look at getting somebody like that with that type of expertise as our city is just continuously just exploding. So I, I, I kind of agree with the, the engineering part because, again, going to Frisco and seeing how they worked their lights and the way the mechanics, it was just genius, and the way they ran that city. And we can be there as well, but we just need to budget for it.
I would add that I don't, I do remember the eighty thousand for the pavement study, and I remember over the years thinking that was probably the best money we spent on any study because it was actionable and it turned, it had budgetary impacts. It told, I mean, and so there was no real guessing about which roads we needed to fix next because it grades them all, maps them all, and, and puts that plan out. So I wish it didn't, you know, quadruple in price, though. I don't understand that. But they, they really, they go and they have like, it's not just like planning. They're actually like going in the streets with rollers and filming, and I don't know exactly what all they do, but it is a really good snapshot of the condition of our roads, so.
I concur. I think you said there was a thirty percent increase on the overall road coverage.
That is correct, yes, sir.
So I'm assuming that's where some of the cost comes in, and then obviously, things are just more expensive. I'm, I just wanted to be vocal about my support on these, these items, and I can say that it's not maybe. It certainly is the case where some lights throughout our city are not. And I can say that it's not maybe, it certainly is the case where some lights throughout our city are not timed well. So I just wanted to make my vocal support for these two.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Chance Patea with the Environmental Services and Trades.
Chance couldn't be here tonight. He's celebrating his daughter's birthday, and I couldn't take that away from him. So Jerry Hendricks is the city manager for the record, presenting the environmental services and trades budget. The top thing on our budget is five technicians and a crew leader for a new crew that would do things like planting flowers, planting new trees, trimming existing trees, removing dead trees, and other things that are also part of our beautification plan that aren't directly related to mowing. Right now, any of these activities need to happen. We have to pull people off the mowers to, to get those done. Part of the additional crew and the existing crews is new trucks. We asked for five new. Don't have to be Chevy trucks. They can be Ford's, Dodgers. We don't care. But the ones that we have are getting very old and spend a lot of time in the shop. Being in the shop costs money as well as takes time away from when getting our crews and equipment around to the places they need to be. We're asking for a new backhoe. That backhoe is critical at our, as we go and we find more and more illegal dumping sites we need to clean up. Removing dead trees that have fallen in rights ways and, and maintaining ditches and digging for electrical repairs. We're asking for four new X-Mark mowers, these are mowers that they ride. If you had an opportunity to read the, the monthly report we sent out last month, and the last page shows all the mowing that, that Environmental Trades does, as well as the mowing that Brightview does. And you'll see there's a lot of red on that map, which shows what Environmental Trades folks mow. And keep in mind also, Brightview mows every other week. So if there's mowing that needs to take place in between their visits, that they do that as well. Excuse me. Going down this list, you'll see a lot of these numbers are just consumables or commodities that we're asking for increases in. Because as you know, prices are going up and we're seeing lots of activity in these areas. So we're just wanting to make sure there's enough money in these line items to cover those things. And the last item is a chemical sprayer and spreader, and that's for application of herbicides and pesticides and things like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just real quick, Jerry, on the sprayer, what are we looking at putting the sprayer on? Is it a vehicle? Is it a utility vehicle? Or, and what is the reach on the sprayer?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
You don't know? Okay, I'll give that with Chance then. I'm just, I'm just curious to see how we're.
We'll bring that information.
And when you see him, also ask him why he wants to go with X-Mark mowers. So I can think of.
Well, it's probably the same reason he wants to go with Chevy, but.
Well, it's why the police wants to go with, you know, Harley's. I don't understand it. Why don't you get the right stuff, you know? I'm just joking.
We will end up with the right stuff.
The, the facility, the building, that this is going to be stored in. I know we've been having discussions about that. I remember, I think James has discussed it as well.
So we have half a million dollars in the budget for building when we went. And we had help from Connie at the Ways for Our Treatment Plant to start working on the scope of that building. And we brought in an engineer to help us design that. And, and the half a million dollars wasn't going to cover that. Half a million dollars would cover most of the, are the engineering part of the building. To be able to bring in a full-fledged building with offices, showers, and all the things that they had scoped would be another million dollars. And so we're reevaluating how best to spend that half a million dollars to store that equipment and, and do without the offices and showers and stuff for now.
Just, I thought we had a building that we were going to erect already. What, what happened?
Well, we have a building that we've erected already at Park Yard.
Yeah.
And, and that building would represent probably half of.
Of the need.
Of what we were looking at for Environmental Trades. And my understanding is that initial estimate was basically for erecting that type of pole barn, but not include any of the other utilities that would have been inside it.
Thank you, Jerry.
So, so just to be clear on that, council did approve in the past a pole barn type building, you know. It was roughly half a million dollars. So an engineered building would need to come back as a full, you know, CIP city facility.
And that'd be a metal building, is what we're looking at, or?
It'd be a metal frame and a metal exterior. But inside, it would be finished out for offices, a trading room, showers, locker rooms that could change or close. And, and also using the, the area out where the Ways for Our Treatment Plant is, as they're planning their next expansion.
Well, that's all good, but where do we, if we, if this all gets approved with these, and we don't have space to store it, how are we gonna? I mean, this is, we've got to put these under roof. We're not leaving this stuff outside.
So a lot of this stuff is replacement, replacing existing equipment.
Replacement. So we're, but we're already infringing on other buildings, correct? Other?
We're, we're using the Park Yard. We, I don't know if you've been out there lately, but we've been doing a lot of work cleaning it up and making space. And, and it's adequately serving us right now.
So you think that with these requests, everything will be able to be stored on the roof? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know if it'll be under a roof, but it'll be stored in a yard and be secure. And, and we can, we can look at ways to create shelter for them.
Under roof. No mowers, get rained on. No bolts, get seawater. No greased joints, get rained on. We've got to be able to do that for, to protect our equipment.
Yes, sir.
My question is, this Environmental Services and Trades largely is so we can do a lot of things in-house that currently we subcontract to Brightview as well on, correct?
We use Brightview to focus on our, what we call our beautification corridors, which are the main corridors going in and out through the city that most people drive on. And, and that supplements what the rest of our crews do. We have, in Environmental Trades, currently we have 14 people. That includes our division manager and half of an admin assistant. So that leaves 12 to go out currently and do all the other mowing and graffiti abatement, illegal dumping cleanup, tree maintenance, and all that other stuff that they do.
So I guess what I'm getting at is ideally, you know, we, we have groups that we've subcontracted out. I know several years ago, we made a conscious effort to build up our street division team. So I see this as kind of the same thing, so we can get away from contracting out to third-party services. So in a perfect world, we have shelter for all these things. If this all went through, we still would also be supplementing what we do with a third party like Brightview.
Yes, sir.
And I would just say, the goal, I, I don't think backhoes and, you know, trailers need to be covered. But if it's a mower or any kind of like pressure washers or, you know, yeah, anything with an engine like that. You know, because of just two, two years, it gets, the sun fading and the, and the rain, rust and, you know. So we should definitely make that a, you know, a priority. And then also, you know, budget for it.
Sure. And we have that half a million dollars still to be able to facilitate coverage for those, that equipment. It just won't be climate controlled.
Yeah, climate's not the, not the big issue.
I, I kind of would like to see that have been expanded a little bit and make sure that we do get those other pieces of equipment covered as well. Because weather does have an effect on all pieces of equipment. So with council's will, I'd, I'd love to see that increase from half a million to a little more, to make sure that we cover everything up.
Okay. We'll firm up that number and find out, make sure that we have enough coverage to cover that equipment.
Thank you, Jerry.
So I have the same exact concerns as Dex regarding hiring new employees in addition to WLE. Can I ask how much we currently contract out as far as, I don't know if they call it Brightview or WLE? And wasn't there a contract that was pulled? Is that going to come back? I think it had an incorrect entity?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Paige has been working with Brightview's attorney to, to track the privity of contract. That's what the legal term is. I call it chain of custody from WLE to Brightview. She sent all that information out in an email, I believe, yesterday. So all the, all the contracts with WLE, with the exception of the irrigation, which I sent an email out about yesterday, also had already been approved by council. And the direction of council, as we understood it, was to prove the privity of contract, which we've done. And none of that work has, has moved forward yet. We made a response from council on the email sent by Paige. And if you want us to bring it back further, we can bring it back. But I think our understanding is that we've responded to council's request.
But this didn't get an actual vote? This was pulled but not voted on?
The, the, the action was to correct the name on the PO. And I think Paige has addressed that in her, her email. And I don't think we have to bring it back at this point to make the PO valid.
It was approved with.
Right. With the correct name initially.
So the, the irrigation will come back?
The irrigation will come back. But the PO for the four additional projects, it turns out initially was correct after much discussion.
Okay, so can I get the costs?
Then we have the PO right now for 744,000.
Okay, that's, is that all the, not all, but nothing current, because that's going to be moving forward, right? So anything current? Prior to having us approve this?
This is all prior to that. We have, we have the one-year land state maintenance service contract, Cop Parkway, Marketplace Avenue. That was some of the bigger ones.
Okay, so if we take the current and then we add in the 257, 292 for them, we're looking at $1 million between WLE and hiring five technicians? And I don't know of any other department that gets that kind of assistance.
Well, beautification and cleanliness scored almost the highest as a priority, and our performance has been lowering. I think it should be 2 million, just to throw that out.
So, so does wastewater. And I have it pulled up. I've been looking at it as we speak. Crime prevention and code enforcement as well. So my whole point being, I, I want Kyle to be just as beautiful as everybody else. But I think we've got to find a strategic way to do it without spending a million dollars just on maintenance.
And so just, just to point out, I think it's not just on beautification. I think it's also for safety. For me, it's when you see fires throughout the state, it's usually because of overgrown grass, stuff like that on the roadway. So if, if our goes to pull back from that, I, I would really deter against that. Because, you know, anytime you travel throughout the state of Texas, any, any area that you travel by that's near roadway usually goes up in flames when you don't address those grass needs. So I definitely would worry about pulling away from that.
So I guess my concern would be, if we did not have WLE, how many employees could we, could we get? When we're looking at $257,000 for five employees. So without WLE, we could have approximately 15 to 20 additional employees. And I think those employees could do the same amount of work. We would just be having them here in Kyle instead of send, yeah, out.
So, so WLE, when they come in, they bring in all their crews and do it all in a timely manner. We could probably do it with employees, but it'd be ongoing. So we'd just have to weigh it. So, yeah, definitely.
That's employees, that's mowers, that's storage, that's insurance, that's benefits. We've, we went through all of these things. And WLE, from an efficiency standpoint and ratio of yards mowed, you know, acres mowed to, to cost, if you really break it down, like really do the numbers and not have an agenda, it's not even close.
Yeah, if we, if someone wants to, if we could see that, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly concur with that overview of it. I think, you know, we're not going to be able to replace what Brightview does in one annual budget. But I think the, I'm talking about the projection of getting there eventually. I don't think we're there in this fiscal year. But I was just trying to get an idea of that trajectory and if that is also the ultimate goal. I'm not sure how many years that, that takes to get there.
Well, it's also the standard, you know. We get, with, with WLE, we have a contract. We're set, we get to say, this is how many times that each piece of grass gets mowed. And with staff, you know, we, what we get back sometimes is, you know, a lot of different challenges associated with coverage and WLE. But per contract, you can hold accountable, you know, to a contract based on a specific agreed-upon outcome, which was a big, a big part of how we made this transition in the beginning. Because we were just simply told we couldn't, couldn't mow like this, no matter how many employees we added back then. But that standard helped. And then WLE should never be considered a replacement to any particular division. It should be seen as something that is underneath a division. And this is where James, you know, and the creation of this thing, it, it's, it's not meant to replace a department. It's meant to be a tool. And that these extra items are also part of an overarching program that has a larger objective.
They're, they're there to supplement what we're doing, so.
Can I add some background on that? I work, Tim Cropley, facility, let me do this here. Hi, Tim Cropley, Facility Manager. I work hand-in-hand with Chance quite a bit, and I sit across from him in the same office. And I watch what he does, and he and I work together. What, what Brightview does, they come in and they bring like 40 people in, in one shot on Wednesday. And they knock out all of those corridors in one day. So those corridors are cut, trimmed, and blown one, one time, one day, and it takes care of the whole thing. That frees up the rest of his division for the entire week to hit all of the other areas, plus the trouble spots that come up. So it, it does serve a very valuable purpose. For us to be able to flood the city with 40 employees would cost us a fortune for, for that amount of work. Where they can come and knock it out, they pay for all the equipment. And we don't have any of our equipment out there. They're paying all the fuel costs. Of course, out of the contract, but it's covered through all of that. So what, what, what we're getting out of that is we're getting a really quick, big boost in work on that one day. That's then allowing us to take our employees and go out and do the finish work for the rest of the city and hit some of the areas that we're not having contracted, like for instance, on Kelly Smith Road or out on Button Lane, where it's kind of outside of the city's major corridors, but they are corridors that we are responsible for taking care of. So I'll also talk to this because I used to do what Chance does on the park side of the house. And we used to do all of the, a lot of that mowing. So that's why I decided to kind of see if I could maybe give you a little more clarity on that.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I guess my only concern would be the, the 700,000 plus the five employees. And so if it wants to be either or, I'm okay with that. It's just kind of hard to justify spending that much on both.
All right, well, I can, we can bring back a strategic plan for bringing that all in-house. I would just add that bringing on that many employees is.
I'm used to a cross-analysis.
Sure. You know, it, it's hard enough right now bringing in employees for what we have, given the current labor market. That retaining employees is hard, the strain on HR staff for being able to advertise.
You're bringing back what? A strategic plan for bringing, for eliminating WLE?
No.
Well, that's what I heard.
That's not the direction of council.
Okay, I think what we were talking about is just a cost analysis. And that would be great. And it could, I, I hope it does show what we're currently doing is working. I'm okay with that. So there is no harm, no foul, and just showing us that the 745,000 dollars that we're investing in our city really is the best use. I mean, Mayor Mitchell can tell us, but I would like, you know, when I go talk to my residents, I'd like to.
And we did that when we first initiated the program. We'll update those numbers and we'll bring them back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Tim, I believe he's still at the mic.
Thank you.
Tim Cropley, Facilities Manager, for the record. This year, what I'm looking for, you're going to see most of my requests related to manpower and some of the equipment is related to us beginning to take ownership of the new police justice center. That's going to add a large amount of square footage to my, my employees' current workload. We're going to be going from 97,000 total right now to over 158,000. We're adding about 64,000 square feet. So what I'm looking for right now is one lead building maintenance technician, that would be a custodial supervisor, who would be predominantly responsible for the justice building. Four building maintenance technicians, which are, again, custodians to provide the custodial service at that building. And one maintenance technician. and one maintenance technician who would be another, um, actual maintenance worker who would help replacing the light bulbs, fixing, fixing everything that breaks, and keeping up with, we're going to have a chiller plant at the new plant for the HVAC system, so I'm going to have to get somebody who can operate and, and keep up with a chiller plant. So I'm looking for that. Within the equipment, the restroom cleaning machines, that's a workforce multiplier. It'll allow the custodians to come in and knock out the locker rooms, the shower rooms, the, all of the, all the bathrooms much, at a much higher level of cleanliness, and do it much faster. So we'll be able to do a better job, do it faster, which is going to work out to help us make the most use of these FTEs. I have a few things in there for replacing six HVACs. There will be three HVACs on this facility in City Hall here, and three at the library. I've been, over the last, of course, the last couple of years, I've been phasing out the original units that were on those buildings. They are beginning to show a lot of wear and tear. My maintenance costs are going up. I would rather replace these guys than keep putting expensive parts into them. Right now, we're paying about three thousand, four thousand dollars just for a compressor unit, whereas to, to replace some of these units, they're about eight thousand dollars to nine thousand dollars per unit. That cost, of course, is probably going to adjust here in the next year. I had the, our HVAC company give me the pricing, and then I added twenty percent, just so that we could maybe soak up some of that extra cost that's coming. And right now, my lead time on units is twenty-six weeks. If I order them today, I'll have them in six months. Yes, that's the, that's the kind of leads we're looking at right now. I have some money in there, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, looking at replacing the flooring here in City Hall. This room has, is the only place that has new carpeting in it. I'd like to replace the carpeting in the rest of the building. It's beginning to show its age. We have probably forty thousand gallons of coffee on the floor, and we can't get it all out anymore. It's, it's time. The VFW building, anybody who's been in there knows that the VFW building, the roof is a shambles. Right now, it's like walking on a sponge. It needs a whole new roof. I'm going to have to strip the decking out. We're going to have to take off all of the shingling, on both sides, east and west side, strip that clean. I'd like to remove those dormers completely. They were a horrible idea to ever put them in at the beginning, and just go to a flat, a flat surface up there. And do that, I came up with some budgets on that, and it'll be about seventy thousand dollars to replace that roof and fix the interior damage that we've had inside of that building. I, I would like to know what the long-term plans are for that building, to see what money we should spend in there to make it right. The building is old, and it shows, definitely shows its age. Compact pickup trucks, four vehicles. Currently, I'm driving a two thousand and nine F-150 with half a steering wheel in it. It's not a bad vehicle, but it's definitely not the gold standard when you drive, drive around in it. Looks like one of the Sanford and Son vehicles. I'd like to get a four, four new compact pickup trucks. There's no need for my division to have large three-quarter-ton trucks. We can get by with a Chevy Colorado or a Ford Ranger perfectly fine, lower our fuel costs. I burned my fuel budget already this year. It's gone.
That's the Enterprise?
This would be through Enterprise.
It would be through Enterprise?
Yeah, to lease them through Enterprise. And then, that would allow me to have two for the new, new facility, replace my vehicle, add one to my current custodial team, and then I would have enough for my supervisors and people to move equipment back and forth and the other parts. Wet room repairs at Public Works. Currently, in the service bay at the Public Works, we, they, they created an ad hoc wet room, but it's not wet-proof. So we have rotted walls, and we have some other things. I'm going to need to go in and cut the walls out, go up about four feet, strip everything out, rebuild it, and then I want to seal it up with tile and put in pool decking on the floor, and, and put in actual drain rather than discharging the sinks onto the floor and having them hit a floor drain. That's going to cost us about forty thousand dollars. That's about what, that's what I got so far for y'all. I am anticipating my supplies to go up between eleven and twelve percent this year for toilet paper, cleaning supplies, everything else, unless we need to institute a Bring Your Own Roll Day. We're going to have to, we're going to have to soak up those costs.
Chance, real quick, how old are the units that you're talking about? I'm sorry, Tim?
These were put in, the ones here, some of them are from two thousand and six, and they're not, in their, in their older, they're the older technology. They don't have the variable-speed drives. They don't have...
The energy efficiency.
They don't have any, any of the energy efficiency things. And then I have humid troll units currently at the library. And those, those are newer, but those are sucking up energy. I, my largest user of energy in the city is the library, believe it or not. Their, their electric bills are outstanding, and, and the heat is not super. So as, as we've begun to replace those units, it's getting, we're beginning to see some actual positive change in our, in our bills over there.
Yeah, definitely. The technology nowadays is going to be a win for us. Once we change these units out, the energy savings will probably pay for itself.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, definitely. So, yeah, I just wanted to know how old they were. So, yeah, thank you for identifying that and bringing it.
They're, they're at the end of their service life.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to do that, and order them as soon as possible, because I know what the wait times are right now, and all material.
And this, and this change will leave me with three more units on this building that would have to be changed within the next budget cycle, and that would leave me with four more on the library that we would have to change. So you had to have a complete change-out.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
No worries. Everybody?
Yeah. I have a few questions.
Okay.
So I guess one of my first concerns is the building maintenance technicians?
Yes.
Um, I think forty-seven thousand is kind of low.
Um, that, I, I get my numbers from...
Okay. My concern is we're going to open that up, and then it's just not going to get filled.
I agree. We're, we're bumping, I, you know, if we could pay more, I'd be more than happy to pay more. I get these numbers from someone. So I'll tell you, currently, we have one maintenance technician for the entire city, Mr. Nathan Orman, and he works like a dog. He is, he is a work, he takes care of anything you see that's broke. All the light, he changed all the light bulbs in this building by himself. There's seven hundred and ninety-five light bulbs in this building, and Nathan changed them all. He did the library, changed all those. He's changed everything at the Public Works. He's changed it. So the, the man is a working partner. He is, he's fantastic. I would like to get him a partner, so when, because right now, if Nathan's sick, I change all the light bulbs and do all the, and plunge out the toilets and take care of all that stuff. So my management duties go out the window, and I become the new technician. So I'd, I'd like to be able to work that out so that I can focus more on some of the longer-term project management, some of the bigger things.
Okay, and so if I could get the current budget from Perez, please?
One point one four nine.
One point one four nine. Okay, and so you guys maintain all the city buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
How many city buildings are there?
Right now, I believe we get eleven that we're servicing.
Okay, and then is the maintenance of the vehicles also budgeted in for that?
I believe on the Enterprise, it is, that is worked, worked into that cost. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's it? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Major maintenance.
Not, not oil changes.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
He says not oil changes and stuff.
Yeah, small maintenance, that's something that...
So how does the city do that? Because I think more important than having a new car is, or not, you know, because you're not to keep it, but is to maintain it and make sure you're taking care of it.
Well, I, I can tell you that, um, my, my vehicles don't get a lot of miles on them. They're not, mine, two thousand and nine has seventy thousand miles on it. At one time, it was a Parks wheel, so it idled a lot, but it's, yeah, it's not happy. But, but the new ones that I got last year, I think I'm just over three thousand miles on them. So we're not, we're not talking a high-mileage vehicle by any stretch of the imagination. We'll get good money on them when we turn them back in at the end of the lease time.
Okay, so Perez, if you can, there's a couple requests in here for new, for new cars. Can you, we get a cost on maintenance of these new cars?
Sure.
Thank you.
And we do have, through the Enterprise program, a discounted maintenance rate with local maintenance shops.
Okay. So how does that happen now, then? How do we?
So, well, they're on a rotation, the vehicles are, so when they're up for maintenance, and we get pinged that we should take them in, and then we'll just take them to any one of the shops, and they'll give us that, a low rate for whatever maintenance is, is needed.
But if it's not budgeted, where's that money come from?
No, it's budgeted.
Oh, it is?
It's budgeted, just not out of...
Every department has a maintenance budget line on it.
Right. It's just not out of the Enterprise contract.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Number six, the repairs building for the roof and interior.
Yes, sir.
I think you just mentioned that, you know, council's going to need to start looking into what we're going to do with that building.
Yes.
We did a fundraiser there about a couple of weeks ago, and we had that AC pump in at seventy-four, and it was still a sauna.
Yeah, the...
And so...
And that's a new...
Has, yeah, that's, is that a new system? Because I was going to ask...
I put that system in two years ago.
Would that be something to be considered in a future budget to have that unit replaced?
There's been some discussion back and forth within the city about the long-term viability of that building.
Okay.
In a period, whether there's going to be a building there for any length of time. I know we're severely restricted if we want it. Whatever we want to do in that position, because of the lease we have with the railroad, we can't change the footprint of the building.
Oh, it's...
The footprint has to, it can't go any bigger. So that's what, what you see is what the building will, will be going forward. So if we were going to look to create a bigger building for the VFW, or create a bigger community building space, that's not a place that we can do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
So, just to, just to add to that, so...
Yes, sir.
I know that the BFW currently has a, a building that Mueller has promised them. So they do have a building. What they're looking for right now is land to build it on. So they actually have a building that's been given to them that, and they're just paying for the erection of the building, and that's it. But definitely is what I think they're looking for right now is the land, because they are getting ready to build their own facility. They just, they're just not land poor right now, but...
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I think long-term, I, I really would not want to see that building fixed up for long-term, because I don't, I really, I hate to see us even spend anything on it right now, because their, their goal is to get out of that building. They need more room.
And I'm of the same mind. It's just that if we're going to have occupancy of the building, I have to make it safe for people to be in there.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, and definitely, yeah. All right, thank you, Tim.
I'm of the same thought, because I, I don't know what kind of roof you would be considering, whether it be just, you know, thirty-year composite. But I personally, if we were going to go the direction, but I'm in agreement, I don't necessarily think we should. A metal roof with, similar to railhouse and, and what we've done on the square, you know, to create that sort of consistent, that'd be more expensive.
Yeah, we're looking at, this would be a composite shingle.
Right.
Going to metal would probably...
Double it.
At least double it. Yeah, I looked at one for my small house. It was like thirty grand. Yeah, just, just, just for the metal, not for, because right now, the metal, you can't find metal. That's, it's, it's a big issue.
Yeah, well, it was like forty grand just for the, the gazebo, if you remember what was good for that.
It still hurts.
It does hurt.
Thank you, Tim.
Be good? All right.
Okay, thank you, Tim. All right, next, Perez.
All right. For the finance department, this is a catch-all budget. So even though the number is large, it's not for the finance department. Almost ninety percent of it is for other city departments. So first up, economic development incentive payments. These are the three-eighty agreements that council has approved over the years. We're anticipating increase in the dollar amounts to be paid out next year. Combination of reasons, one, sales tax are improving, so those three-eighties that are tied to sales tax, they'll have more cash outlay. Property tax valuations are going up, so those three-eighties that are tied to property tax-based reimbursements, our payout will increase next year. In addition, we'll have a couple of new three-eighties that will kick in, such as Costco and ENF. So these are preliminary numbers. Believe by the time we get to work session three, these will be more refined by that time. Cities audit fees will increase. We're increasing the number of funds we have, the number of debt service payments we have, number of PIDs we have, number of TERS we have. So everything is increasing. So in association with the number of accounts that they will have to cover, the audit fees are going up by eighteen thousand five hundred. That's also a very early estimate. Bank charges, credit card processing fees, we're seeing an increase in the number of credit card transactions. And this is not just for finance, but throughout the city. So the, the major credit card user departments are utility billing, the building department where we have permits, planning department where they file their plan reviews. These are the three large credit card users in the city. And as we increase the number of credit card usage, we're also increasing the, not only the, the swipe fees at the front end, but also at the back end when the merchants are actually processing those transactions. So we think it's going to go up to another hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars next year, based on our projections of, of, of credit card transactions, plus bank charges are going up along with that. Number four, investment advisory fees. These are for our OPEB funds and the city's general investments that we have. Those fees are, are based on the investment balances. We're doing fairly well in our investments. So as the carrying balances go up, so do the fees. Number five is our general property and liability and workers' comp insurance. We're adding more employees. We're adding more facilities. We're going to be adding a major facility next year to our property insurance, so hence the general increase of twenty-two thousand estimated. Number six, we've been able to postpone it for about two years, and at our next council meeting, I will be asking city councils permission to start the process for issuing thirty-seven million dollars in GO bonds for the public safety center facility. The debt service associated with that, at this time, we're estimating about three-point-six million dollars a year for principal and interest payback. But this will also, will change as we get closer to the bond market, or the bond sale date. It takes us about, by the time I get city council's permission, it takes us about two months to close on the bonds. And we do it in two steps. I come before you, based on city charter compliance requirements, to get your approval to proceed. And once that is given, then we go through the process of seeking the underwriters, the investors, the bankers, the AG's opinion and all that. It takes us about two months. Then we go to the bond market to sale, to sell the bonds. On the sale of the bonds, we come back to council for your approval. Is this now your final approval to issue the bonds? So the debt service is going to be about three-point-six million. In code, work order module, this is something we're adding to the finance department's accounting capabilities, and that will cost us about twenty-seven thousand six hundred, both the initial implementation cost plus the annual license fee. Number eight, we typically do merit increase in the city of Kyle, and that has two components, a CPI component and a performance-based increase component. As you are aware, the CPI, or Consumer Price Index, has jumped tremendously over the months, and we typically use the last twelve-month moving average, January to December. Looking at the January to December CPI average is eight-point-five percent. So here again, the city manager is going to have to assess if he's going to go strictly merit pay, or a combination of general wage increase for our city employees to keep them at the market and not let them fall too far behind, and then have some kind of merit. If we go with an eight-point-five percent GWI citywide, that's about five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Next, here again, these are some citywide requests. We are no longer in Kansas anymore. We're closing in on sixty thousand population. We have desperate needs for staff, city attorney support for all city departments, not just speaking for finance. So I am proposing that city council consider, and the city manager in his proposed budget, two city staff attorneys, along with law clerks, to support the attorneys. Because every city department, if you think about it, from police to public works to finance, every one of us needs attorney assistance on a daily basis, on contracts, on developer agreements, on purchase procurement. And it's not that we're not getting legal support, but when you have a contracted city attorney, you are in a queue with all other city clients that they have. So we have to take a number. Until we get our number, we get served. We, our needs are getting such that we need immediate access to city attorney assistance on our daily business. Now, contracted law firms can assist us on, just like we do on engineering contracts. We have a city engineer, and then we have specialized city engineering firms that help us on design and construction. We can do the same way. If we go with one just city attorney, then we might as well not do it. We've tried that model before. It doesn't work. We have to set it such that it is successful. You have to have their, not only the attorney, but also the clerk that will support them, and some support costs. So one, two, and three on this page is for setting up a legal staff on, on a daily basis, supporting all city departments throughout the city. Number four is for the finance department, two staff accountants. As we're increasing our budget, as we're adding more employees, we're also increasing the complexity of our accounting and financial reporting. We would like to have a dedicated staff accountant for monitoring the city's operating budget for each department, the transactions, review more thoroughly... transactions, review more thoroughly, the support, the internal controls. And then another accountant that would support, dedicated to support financial reporting for fixed assets. As we're investing more in capital infrastructure, we need to add, emphasize that in our financial accounting. We're doing it on a part-time basis. We're pulling staff from here, throwing in a new task. When they're done here, we're putting them back. That's, I think it's, it's run its course. Now it's time to have dedicated standalone staff. So the second accountant will be for fixed asset accounting, pit accounting, TIRS accounting, investment accounting. All of the investments are done by me, and I think it's time other people need to learn how to do those things. So that's where the two accountants are needed. And then we're adding two meter technicians. We have a total of three meter technicians that not only install meters, read meters, maintain meters, but also troubleshoot meters. We had three meter techs when we had 9,000 customers. We are now north of 15,000 customers. So we desperately need at least two more meter technicians. To set up this organization, as we think we need to support the city's financial responsibilities, we'll have to reorganize the finance department. And in order to accomplish that, I'm requesting reclassifying a senior financial analyst to accounting manager. And then in the utility billing area, as we add more meter technicians, we'll have to reorganize that division. I'm seeking reclassification of a supervisor to a manager and a lead clerk to a supervisor. And then for the last item is the two trucks for the meter technicians. So all of this adds up to about 5.46 million. Of that, for finance department, it's only 288,000. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I just have a couple. One, why are the water meter technicians under, you may have said it, I just missed it. Why is that under your?
So in finance, we have three divisions, the budget and accounting division, the municipal court, and the utility billing office. So the utility billing office has the meter techs.
And then my second question is, you've talked to me about offices and rooms. So you've, you've made recommendations on about 10 different spots. Where would they, where they office but for?
Okay, so the reclassifications do not require any additional office space. They're existing staff. The meter techs, they operate out of the meter technician trucks, and they have a desk that they share for work orders, service orders. So the two staff accountants will need office space. I was thinking of the same office that Jennifer spoke of. So we're going to have.
I think she made requests for three or four as well.
Right.
Where are all these folks going to go?
So what we're thinking is, once PD moves to their new facility, that will release some office space unless council has a special need for that building. We may use that building as a city hall annex. So that's the only other place. The third option is to take away the executive session room and canure that into an office and move the executive session here behind the partition.
Tentative plan is move city secretary office to the Public Safety Center as well. Thank you.
So I think once PD moves to the new facility, that'll give us a lot more options.
That would take the records room over to the PD as well, correct?
I'm not sure.
Or the file cabinets?
There would be room there for that, yes.
Okay, sounds good. That gives us more room.
Additionally, has there been any thought of reconstructing this building and making it, I know there's a lot of wasted space, especially when you walk upstairs and there's tables and whatnot. Has there been any thought of just re-planning that out?
Not to my knowledge, unless Scott is considering that.
Well, currently, we've maximized almost everything we can behind closed doors, you know, behind the badged entrances. So once the Public Safety Center does open up, we will vacate some offices. There will be some room to expand. I'm not sure, but we'll look at that in more detail.
Okay, I guess my concern is like downstairs, there's like a receptionist, and then you walk upstairs and there's another receptionist. And so I guess I'm just wondering, can we eliminate the one upstairs and just kind of reorganize with that?
We can. We're also looking at adding, so y'all are aware the workplace is changing? Y'all might have noticed that over the last couple of years. So we're adding flex workspace to, into the lobby. I just recently started a conversation with Tim about bringing in additional power supplies so that where there's, because usually when people are working in a flex space, they need laptops and these other types of things. The other thing is, is that between shared space and booking desks, we can actually fit double the amount of people that we currently have in city hall without having to spend a dollar more. So that's the benefit of having Office 365 and shared folders and teams and all these other types of tools whenever they're leveraged properly. So between additional space that we can identify and leveraging the tools that we have, we literally could double the number of personnel that work here in city hall without having to build another building.
That's a big, bold statement.
Yeah, well, my concern is, a lot of places are going to, you know, work from home. But for me, I feel like as a city, the permanent work from home, I don't know how that would work out.
Well, it's all relative to a certain degree. There are certain positions that really never have to step foot in city hall. A perfect example would be like someone who's doing a water model. Like, they never interface with the public. It's the ones that interface with the public the most, who are certainly needed. And then there's the culture and the other issues that come with bringing people, you know, on campus, if you will. That's probably the better term that's been used. But what we're seeing is, and, you know, and this is somewhat evolving and changing too, you know, and cities are a little bit behind the curve, a little bit, but still, we're, as far as Kyle is considered, I think we're pretty far ahead of the curve as, you know, compared to our comparable cities. And thinking forward, like our campus, if you will, is much bigger than just the city hall footprint. It includes coffee shops and other things too, where people are here, but they're also flexing out and they're over at some other place, or they're at the library, or maybe they're over at public works. You know, those are still city facilities too. So I don't think anything that we do in the public sector would end up with 100% employees not in a facility. But I certainly think that there's lots of opportunity. Like, for example, municipal court. Before COVID, there was no such thing as virtual municipal court. That wasn't a thing that you could do. But now we can. And that is a huge benefit for certain people who, it's a lot of trouble to go find childcare maybe and take off work and then try to drive down here to wait for your hearing that may happen six hours from the time you arrive. So there are certain things that we do, that we can do virtually that enhances the experience that we can't do if we don't embrace those as well. So there's certainly a balance that has to be found.
Okay. I guess I wasn't aware that court was now virtual. I thought.
We still have in-person court, but we can do virtual court. And that's kind of my point, is that, you know, we can do virtual meetings. We can have, and it's more than just the hybrid space too. You know, it's, it's, maybe we're working 4:10s. You know, PD works 12-hour shifts. You know, maybe Parks is coming in earlier and getting off earlier before the heat of the day. You know, that is very much the path that the industry is going, is more about employee agency.
I understand. I just remember being in Washington DC and in a Zoom conference call. It was, I don't, I think we all almost fell asleep. Scott, he was awake and was kind of the glue to kept it all together. But there is a difference. And I don't want to lose that as far as being a city and having, you know, our staff available. I don't, I agree, I don't think it always has to be in person, but I think the luxury of working from home, you know, even one employee full-time, all the time, I don't think that's something that we should see as a city. We are civil servants. And I'm the same as you. Like, I have to go to different places to have my meetings as well. So I understand that. But ultimately, I don't want to see city hall be a vacant place.
Yeah, fair. I don't think it'll ever be vacant.
All right, let's move. I agree. Let's keep moving on.
All right. Have all the questions been answered?
Can I get you, I think you're good. Never mind. I'll email you.
Okay, no more questions for Pravez. We will move on to Sandra, HR.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sandra Duran, Director of. I feel like I'm echoing, am I?
I think they're getting yourself.
My apologies that I couldn't be there in person. I had to fly out to Georgia today to be there here for my son. He is graduating in the Army. He's in basic training and didn't want to miss the ceremony tomorrow morning. Congratulations. And looking at the Human Resources Department expenses or the adding, the ones that I'm proposing, I'm proposing a compensation administrator. And this includes, this is base salary plus the benefits and payroll taxes and everything that's included in there. A classification and compensation study for 200,000. And the pay parity implementation, as if you might recall, every year, we've been adding 150,000 to be in par with the cities that the city council has approved that we compare to, which as a reminder, is New Braunfels, San Marcos, Leander, and Flugerville. And with a classification and compensation study, that usually takes about a year to have all the information and the data. So we will also need to be funded as we go to stay in par with the cities that we would like to compare to, or that city council has approved us to compare to. The position of compensation administrator, that is very important for us to have because as we keep on adding different titles to the salary guide, right now, we're up to 50 different job titles. And this person will administer the classification and compensation program, plan, planning, designing, developing, evaluating, the pay practices, procedures, and strategies, and coordinating all these salary surveys that we have every six months with the cities as they change, along with a total compensation, which includes all the benefits in there. They will also handle recommendations for adjustments, dealing with all the different departments and their different pay issues. And I think that's it. Do you have any, I'm pretty sure you're going to have a lot of questions on this, on these three needs.
I think we're good. Sandra?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
And let's just, and this is as much for me, because I keep the time going. But for context, so we're, we're two hours in. And how many departments have we gotten through? Just so we know, because folks at the end will get the worst of us if we're not paying attention to this.
Yeah, probably half.
Doesn't look like even half yet.
So we're just, half the departments, and then there's additional items afterwards. So if we could all, and that includes me and the council as well, let's just, we want to hear from y'all and let's just be expeditious.
I'll keep it brief.
Matt Dawson, Director of IT, for the record. So I'm going to start backwards here. So this is a big year for us with the Public Safety Center opening. We finally get some offices and some flex space for my team. But also, this new center really is the center of technology and the future of technology for the city of Kyle. It really will become our network operations center. And with that, we'll be purchasing a lot of networking equipment. That will be paid for by the PD bonds, so this building can be operational on day one. That figure honestly will be around $100,000. But that will be everything from switches to firewalls to access points to servers for that building. That segues nicely into our internet contract negotiations. I wanted to let you guys know that our five-year contract with Spectrum is up for all of our internet and fiber to most all of our facilities. And so this actually falls on facilities budget, not IT, but I kind of administer it. But I wanted to let you guys know. And so I'm working right now, fortunately, with competitors. We didn't have that five years ago. And so right now, I'm working with Frontier, Grande, AT&amp;T, and Spectrum to basically do RFP to figure out what services we need and also cut costs. The design of this network was really done by my predecessor. So I think ultimately, I can cut costs and improve what we have right now. And I will try to get the best bang for our buck and leverage our positions with all those competitors. Those will be multi-year contracts, so they will be coming to council. So you will see those in the coming weeks or months here. Microsoft Office 365 suite upgrade. As you know, we use Office 365 for the entire city. The council even uses it. We're trying to provide accounts for every single employee in the city. And this will also allow us to upgrade to the higher licensing, which unlocks a lot of the tools and features within Office 365. And a lot of that is security-related items that I'm excited for to prevent ransomware attacks and things similar to that. That pairs well with our phone system upgrade. We're currently using Ring Central for the last six years. And we've been unhappy with the service, and they're kind of going a different direction with us, from us, with their vision. And so I'm looking to move all of this into the Office 365 suite. So this number actually, the good news is with that upgrade to Office 365, it includes a phone system for every employee baked into that cost. So that actually, $30,000 will be a lot less than that. And honestly, I think those together will almost become neutral, where we're maybe pay additional $10,000 than we are right now, when it's all said and done. Moving into positions, for the record, we have, I have four positions underneath me in my department. The last time, and the only time I asked for a new employee, was four years ago, and we created our first systems analyst position. And that position very much is a liaison to different stakeholders in the, in the city to ultimately work with them to roll out new technology, implement it, design it. They're a project manager, they're a trainer, and sometimes even a therapist. And I've learned, looking at other successful cities, that they ultimately have several of these. I think San Marcos has five. And what they do is they have different ones for different divisions in the city, so they can really concentrate them. Because right now, Danielle's just super overworked. And training, you know, we're just spread so thin, but you can have all these great tools, but if nobody knows how to use them, then it's kind of pointless. So we'd like to get to a point, we can train and do more train the trainers. And again, don't forget, this department supports the city. So as the city grows, as these departments grow, as we get this Public Safety Center, we're utilized more and more. We have more and more help desk tickets that come in, which leads to kind of an IT support lead. This person would be kind of tier three of our support, and it would really allow us to handle those tickets and handle all the growth the city's having with all these new employees. And last but not least, is the reclassification of our system administrator to assistant IT director. Marco has been with the city over eight years. He's a very loyal, dedicated employee, very much my right-hand man. And with the department growing, I think it makes sense to start adding a kind of number two. He would kind of handle more of the division of support. But I believe it would, it's allowed the department to grow, allow me to focus on bigger initiatives with the city, and ultimately, you know, keep good candidates working for the city and not lose them. So that completes my report. Any questions?
No questions? All right. Paul?
Okay, Mayor, Council. I'm Paul Phelan, Director of Library Services. We've just got a couple of new asks for you this year in accordance with our long-range plan that we just completed. And we didn't have a lot of time to actually look that over and make these requests. But first thing we'd like to do, in order to better organize the library, currently, aside from myself and the assistant director and our adult services librarian, we really have, well, at least until I got here, we have a couple of library clerks. We essentially have all library assistants with the same title. And sort of as the library grew, they would just take on little things. And what we'd like to do is start organizing that staff a little better. And so one of the things we'd like to do to move forward in that is to reclassify a library assistant to circulation supervisor. And what that would do is provide a person to work that circulation desk to, that would directly supervise the four part-time employees that we have there. And basically, just to up the standard of customer service, make sure we're doing everything the way we should, and those sorts of duties like that, and keeping an eye on certain things. So we, I feel like that would be not only advantageous moving forward, but as we grow and perhaps look at a new facility, we really do need to start creating departments that can be managed a little better. And this would be a step in that direction. The next item we have is one of the, on the feedback that we got on the long-range plan, and of course, and of course, we get this on a fairly regular basis. We get two types of comments. One is, you know, we love the library and the kids love to come here and have a good time, and it seems like such a happy place. And then on the other hand, we have a few people that say, you know, I'm trying to study over here, and it's a little bit loud, and can you help us with this? And we do have a quiet room, but the way that it's kind of been put together, it tends to, the furniture and so forth, and of course, it's getting old now anyway, it needs to be replaced. But it tends to, people tend to visit in there or do things like that. So what we'd like to do to address what the citizens told us they want is a good place to study, a very quiet place, is get some study carols, up to six of those, put them in that room, that quiet room, and make that just for study. And of course, folks will take their tests, will proctor exams and do that sort of thing, and have access to, where they can plug in their laptops and do all those sorts of things. The last two items are just more e-content, which is something, of course, in the long-range plan. The Hoopla Initiative's been very successful. Of course, that's a streaming platform for movies, you know, films, books, audiobooks, you name it, magazines and so forth. And so we'd like to increase that by about 5,000. And the overdrive content, that will, actually, that 4,000 would be for our advantage account, which we currently are in a consortium, but that right there, all the titles that we purchased with this 4,000, in addition to the others, would be just for our citizens. So even though you might be on a waitlist, it's not going to be with the whole Central Texas Consortium. And I would just say that, you know, one of the benefits the library has is we have the thrift store over there and the Friends, and we have put in about the same amount of additional requests this year, so we did have more needs. But a lot of the technology things that we looked at, we've made a request to the Friends, so we didn't bring that to the council this year. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
No?
All right. Great. Mariana?
Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. I will cut my narrative in half for time's sake, and I will just begin with, our budget requests not only reflect our immediate needs in personnel, equipment, and park projects, but they are in direct alignment with our goals to continue working towards our national accreditation and our gold standard. And we have seen with just in the last two years alone during the pandemic, how we have positioned Parks and Recreation here in the city of Kyle as an essential service to the city, with the city of Kyle passing their first Parks Bond ever, with the approval of the Citywide Trail Master Plan, and with the opening of just 3.8 miles of trail. And so with that said, it is my privilege to present our budget request for the upcoming fiscal year. The Parks and Recreation Department has a total of 18 employees in three divisions. Of those 18 employees, only 13 of those are park maintenance technicians, mowing about 555 acres. That does not include trails, and it does not include the upcoming Heroes Memorial Park or La Vereda Park. A summary of our requests includes six new positions, two new seasonal positions, one position reclassification, two leash trucks, a 15-passenger van, three mules, new equipment, other support costs, and new CIPs, which we'll go over in more detail now. We are requesting a total of five new park maintenance technicians. One maintenance technician will go to La Vereda Park, one to City Square Park, and one to Heroes Memorial Park. The other two will assist the three parks and rotate, and they'll also help with other areas of the park. Bright View will be maintaining the parks once a week. And so the purpose of these five park maintenance technicians is to maintain the parks when Bright View is not there. We are asking for therapeutic, therapeutic recreation specialists that will specifically be responsible for programming inclusive and adaptable recreation programs. We have seen the great need, especially when we had our first special needs dance. We would love to do more inclusive and therapeutic recreation programming. We are asking for two seasonal recreation aides that will report to the recreation programmers. The recreation programmers currently have no staff, and if we have any programs or events, they have to run them themselves. The thought is that we would have one seasonal aide work half the year and the other seasonal aide work the other half of the year. We would like to reclass a park maintenance technician position to a program coordinator. We currently have a park maintenance technician that has a huge background in landscape design and graphic artwork. This park maintenance technician has designed numerous projects for us, including banners, flyers, and this person has designed all the banners on Center Street and is currently designing the artwork at the pool, the new mural. So requesting that position gets reprogrammed to a program coordinator. We are requesting a portable restroom with a generator and water tank. For every special event we have, we have to rent restrooms. We're requesting an LED mobile screen, which is leading edge and innovative, so we do not have to use six people to blow up the inflatable screen anymore. This LED mobile screen will also, can be used for just other promotional events. It does not have to have movies playing on it. As I mentioned, we have only 13 park maintenance technicians, mowing 555-plus acres of land. We preferred X-Mark mowers just for comparable pricing, but we could do Ferris, Charles, Spartans. But all of our mowers are getting to the point where they are outdated as well and need a replacement. So these would be replacement mowers and different sizes due to whether or not we're mowing just a city park or undeveloped parkland. For the two Chevy trucks, they'd be replacement trucks at two of our parks. And our 15-passenger van would be dedicated to the Recreation Division, either for programs or events, and even for the opportunity to have mobile recreation. So there'll be days where the 15-passenger van will go out to different neighborhoods and host different recreation programs, since we do not have an indoor recreation facility. We're asking for three mules. We did get two mules in a previous budget request, but we are still in need of three, one replacement mule, one mule for rec and admin, and another mule for our parks. We're asking for a water trailer and a dump trailer. We are currently borrowing, sharing the water trailer, and we are in need of a dump trailer. We're asking for an Altos Track brush mower that will be used for mostly areas of space where mowing was tight for us to get to. We currently use the Ben track, and so our Ben track is good for probably another four to five years. And instead of replacing the Ben track, we like to go forward with the brush mower. And as you have, may have noticed in the community survey, satisfaction survey, the survey respondents have shown that their satisfaction with recreation programs and events has increased from last year, and that's because we have been able to, with our new Recreation Manager position, to offer more recreation programs and events. With that said, we are at the point where we do need recreation software. We're using about five different applications. We're still doing rentals by Excel spreadsheet in hand and calendar. We'd like to have one software that does all of our camp registration, all of our rentals. Residents would be able to look online to see if pavilions or ball fields are available. They'd be able to book online, and that's the direction we'd like to lead with the recreation software. We have been working for over the past year with the Park Recreation Board on selecting a mascot for the department. Pervaz added our little fox there. So we like to get a mascot costume. One of the leading trends in recreation programming are Gaga pits. So we are asking for two Gaga pits. And then various other equipment, such as blowers and just small tools and equipment. As far as our CIPs, and also, that was noted as one of the items in the community survey, we are again asking for a Recreation Center facility. We are wanting to push our recreation program to gold standard and leading edge, and we do not have any indoor facility to do so. However, we've still been able to program new programs this year, such as outdoor yoga, outdoor baton twirling, partnering with Center Field to host indoor trivia nights. So we would love to continue our programming efforts. We are asking for five new park restrooms at all of our park restrooms. And so you might ask, what happens to the existing restrooms? Well, they would turn into storage for our new equipment. We are looking to develop Four Seasons in Brookside Park, where the plan is to put some pickleball courts. We have pool improvements that we still need to address. We would love to program an all-inclusive playground for people of all needs. We are asking for annual funding for festive lighting and decorations, funding for our ball field lights and improvements. So ball field improvements might include the players' benches, the dugouts, fencing. We would like to promote more fishing at Cool Springs and Lineburger Lake, and to do so, we would need irrigation. We are already starting with irrigation at Greg Clark Park in the future. Have some money funded for Steeplechase Park, but we would like to expand that to both, to our other parks, including Waterleaf Park. We do need some indoor improvements at Krug, including new tables and new chairs. We would like to request for a office building at Lake Kyle, but if you want to picture it, it's really just a mini law cabin, but a smaller size of what we have now, just for more space and storage. And other park improvements, including shading, picnic benches, shade structures. And those are our requests. Any questions?
Yeah, Mariana, just real quick, on the trailer, the portable restrooms, what are we looking, where are we going to use those? At the events, or are we looking at maybe downtown?
The portable restrooms should be, would be for events, but would be housed downtown.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, that's a great idea. Thank you.
They look like regular park restrooms, but more of like the updated innovative style. I can email you a picture?
Well, I've seen some, excuse me, I've seen some really great ones.
At various parks, really nicely built, and so I'm assuming that's what these are going to look like.
Yes, we would like to get an updated park, updated restrooms in all the parks. Yes.
So to get these numbers, we've, is this on? So to get these numbers, we've looked at restrooms in other parks and got prices based on that. But before we actually purchase them, we'll be doing some due diligence. We'll be bringing options to the council to review.
So these restrooms would be at all the parks?
We would get new restrooms at each park. So they, it would be a portable trailer, which would be housed at City Square Park, and then Waterleaf, Steeplechase, Greg Clark Park, they would all get new restroom facilities.
And so that
New buildings.
Permanent, but so now we're running new lines, water lines, sewer lines. Would it be feasible to just upgrade what we have now, or are they just too small?
I think, yeah, so we, our Park Maintenance Manager is here as well, and we did look at quoting upgrades versus new restrooms, and we're like, we need more storage. So by the time we ask for more storage and upgrade our restrooms, it just made more sense to us to ask for new restrooms and use our existing restrooms as storage.
Okay, I was just thinking about utilities, because that's a big cost. So running utilities, it was still a better number than that? Okay, that's all I needed to know then. That's great. All right, awesome, great job, guys.
So the idea on the restrooms again, is where they're at now, just turn those into storage and then build a separate restroom within a certain area and just run the lines through? Or just still have them connected? Now, let's say for example, Steeplechase, would that also include maybe expanding that patio, the actual area there, and pavement as well, paving that area?
I like that idea.
Yeah, and then you can actually make it even wider, the patios or actually, whatever they're called, you know, and use it, and then people can actually use it more, add more park benches in there, or just open it up for shaded play. A bigger pavilion, yes, that's the word.
That's a great idea. Just one last thing, if, no, there comes a moment to go yet, I wanted to give everybody the opportunity. I've, I had a resident reach out to me, and we identified that we've got a park desert in an area of town. I really thought we had, as a city, had done a really good job of identifying parks throughout the city, but if you go down BB Road before it turns into High Road, there are no parks whatsoever in that area. People have to drive forever to get to a park. I, I know there's, there's been talk about, you know, plans in that area, but I'd really like to see that come to fruition in real time. And if there's a way we could add that to this budget year, would be great. If we could identify an area, get a park started, and the reason why is that there is nothing out there for those residents whatsoever, except the ball fields. And that's it. There's no parks.
Is there a park at the Optum School?
It's a, it's a real tiny one, it's really cheaply made. So, you know, there's, there's nothing for those people to take their kids out to.
It's just a baseball complex, but it's, it's a very heavy populated area.
Talk to me a little bit more about a few different things. I'm looking at the CIP list you have here. Let's look at number five. Tell me a little bit more about inclusive playground, what you're looking at.
So I think the idea of an inclusive playground in Kyle has been in discussion for about several years, even before I got here. And they've identified portions of Lake Kyle where an inclusive playground could go. An inclusive playground is essentially an all-abilities playground. So the play pieces that are in the playground will be designed for folks who are amputees or folks who come in wheelchairs. The surfacing will be specialized. The pieces of equipment out at the playground would have transfer levels, so if somebody is on a wheelchair, they could easily transfer onto that piece of apparatus. The swings would be more like in a discus shape, where you could roll off your wheelchair and onto the piece of playground equipment. And like I said, the surfacing is a huge deal. So we would love to have, and eventually, me, our team, we would love to get all of our playgrounds to have inclusive places, inclusive pieces, so that way anyone of any need can go to any of our playgrounds and be able to enjoy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that explanation. So you're absolutely right, 2018 is when our kayak group came to us about inclusive playgrounds. We added money in that budget to add a few things to existing parks, and we hadn't really built a new park since La Verda to make that an all-inclusive playground. So I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, my question was poor, I apologize, but I appreciate you explaining that for the audience. Would this be going in to add equipment to all of our existing parks so that, that the ground, similar like we have down here at Mary Heart, the park downtown, adding those swings and additional things to existing park, to the existing parks? That's what this is?
This particular CIP request is for one inclusive park. However, we have asked in our CIP lines for park improvement money at every single park, so that we can use that money to buy inclusive play pieces at the parks.
So that would, that in $200,000, number five is for
For one completely inclusive playground.
And do, have we, if you haven't, it's fine, identified where that most likely would
And speaking with the park board, we still like the idea of Lake Kyle.
Okay, yeah, I love this idea. Next, moving down to item six on that same CIP. So this would, so festive lighting and decorations, this would be holidays throughout the year, various different
Right, this is more specifically geared towards our Christmas holiday lighting every year, that the idea was that every year we would buy new holiday decoration for City Square Park and Center Street, and that the older decoration would get reused at another park, it would be Lake Kyle or Greg Clark Park. It would get, those parks would turn into drive-through holidays. And so the idea behind this was that this festive lighting would be mostly for the holiday season.
Okay, so you did give us a presentation on that, so this is, this is what you were talking about as far as that?
Correct.
And we're looking at a, putting that on the CIP.
I want to jump on number nine, if you're, if you're going down the list, Dex, because we have a lot of trees and things that aren't being irrigated. Is that what this is? Is this designed like out at the dog park at Steeplechase and
Yes, this is, this irrigation request is mostly for ball fields. We like to have the ball fields at Steeplechase and Waterleaf irrigated as well, so we can start running them. And then, as Benito started to mention, along the entrance grass lines of each park, the, the gateways to the parks.
Is there currently a plan or in place to try and get irrigation on the different trees and things that we've been planting, like around Steeplechase? Because I believe we have to go and hand-water those things, right?
There's currently not a plan for that.
With that concern there, implementing an irrigation system on the playing field, would we have issues of players breaking them or running into them or damaging them if we set up a whole irrigation system within the field? I see where you're going as far as, okay, we got our tree that we plant, right? And we don't have anything there, we're hand-watering them
Right.
versus actually
If we, if we install landscaping in general
Yes.
without irrigation, I think we're making a mistake, because we'll let it die, or we will have to expend a lot of staff time and resources
Staff spends, what, six hours, four to six hours a day sometimes watering.
And those trees that we have, are they donated, or are they given to us, or are we
We'll probably spend money on them.
Yep. So it's kind of like
Both, in CDS contract, we are able to request through them as well.
I should still, they'll, they'll grow up better if there's a constant irrigation feed on them, drip lines and those kind of things. So I just, I was excited when I saw citywide park irrigation system, that's what I was thinking.
We can rework the plan.
Landscaping, so
Rework the parks.
I have a question. Since we have the implementation of the Vibe, and we have a ton of growth as far as our parks are concerned, I see there's, you're asking for six new positions. Are any of those for an Assistant Director?
They currently are not. We do, Jerry and I have both discussed the need for an Assistant Director. I think the very last minute, we pulled it in hopes that we could get a therapeutic recreation specialist, but we do need an Assistant Director in the future.
Yeah, because when we were out there discussing and looking at it from pie in the sky, it seems like you're going to be assuming a lot more it seems like you're going to be assuming a lot more responsibilities, so I just want to make sure that you have the right support that you need, so.
It was definitely supported by Jerry, and at, at the end, it was my decision. I wanted a therapeutic recreation specialist. I think that the programming opportunities to have a CTRS on staff are endless. It would be a huge benefit to the city to have a CTRS, um, but we do need an assistant director.
It's just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
So I wanted to say as well, um, I'm a supporter of the number eight, the aeration at Cool Springs and Lineburger Lake for the, uh, fishing opportunities. I know that is something that is certainly popular, um, in our city and attracts attention there. I'm in support as well of the technicians, um, all of them, as well as the recreation, therapeutic recreation specialists. Certainly, I understand sometimes it's tough calls on these, Mariana, but it's year to year. And so sometimes you just gotta push off to the next year. So I understand and respect your, uh, decision in going with the therapeutic recreation specialist this year as opposed to the assistant. Uh, I'm also in support of, largely in support of most of these classifications, the reclassifications. If nothing more than I think, uh, the IT director mentioned it, uh, in his speech, but I think it goes across the board with everyone, um, retaining, uh, our employees and, and that are, have experienced institutional knowledge of this city and different things, that, that's invaluable. And we have a great group of people that work for our city, and, uh, I think that is a necessary, um, expense.
Can I ask if we have aeration behind Tobias and that?
We do not, not in Lineburger. Yeah, we do not have aeration in Lineburger.
Well, I know last year they had all those dead fish. Um, which became a huge issue, and then the smell is really bad. Um, is there-
Our goal is, um, we requested to get aeration at Lineburger so that we can develop the park, and we can install a fishing pier, we can promote some watercraft activities like canoeing, kayaking, and then be able to work with Texas Parks and Wildlife on stocking it and promoting it as a fishing location. But to get there, we need aeration.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I missed one conversation a minute ago, but yeah, aeration is very important at all our, uh, I guess, tanks, ponds, whatever you want to call them, lakes. Um, the reason why is that anytime you have standing water that's not getting oxygenated, I mean, you have the potential for mosquitoes, uh, which would be a health issue. And I think that, you know, aerating everything that, every body of water that we have that is in our city is probably very important for that reason. But yeah, definitely aeration is, is probably key to safety as well.
Any other question? Okay, thank you, Mariana. Uh, Will.
Will Atkinson, senior planner. Uh, before you, we got the, uh, increase request for the planning department budget. We're looking at an increase of approximately five hundred and four thousand dollars. Uh, the biggest chunk of the change in the end is the comp plan rewrite, which is a continuation of a budget item that we already have to some extent in the current budget. We have, um, an estimate from the, um, Verdinity, um, and, um, with the increase, um, in addition for the new, the new fiscal year on that aspect of three hundred and sixty thousand, that'll cover the continuation and continuing cost of the comp plan with a code rewrite as well on the heels of that. We're also, um, asking to, um, throw in approximately fifty thousand dollars for economic development consulting services. Uh, we are using, um, third-party services quite a bit for sub-area plans when it comes to putting concepts together. And it's actually, it's helping quite a bit from, uh, from, uh, getting everybody on the same page, presenting ideas to development that we want to see happen in the area. It's, it's becoming quite successful. Uh, one of the first options that we did with that was, uh, the, the BB Road pud that came through a few months ago. That was, that was with money that we had from this year. We also have legal services on there, but I guess that might possibly get struck if, uh, we end up hiring a, a legal team. Uh, but we are, from this year, um, we, we incre, it's, we've almost doubled the, uh, how much we, we need to keep paying legal. As Pravez mentioned earlier, there, almost every aspect has, has need, has a need for legal to take a look at, so. Um, we're increasing, uh, training and conferences. When it comes to national conferences, we'll get these massive opportunities to learn about what everybody else is doing in the country. Uh, that also includes the state conferences as well. We want to ensure that we have adequate funding to make, to cover the cost of hotels and travel and what have you, and go into the conference as well. Uh, we threw in about approximately ten thousand dollars for office furniture. We currently have, we have one person, one position not filled, and we do not have space. And for, we may need a couple more, um, places for desks, um, for standing desks, for chairs and what have you. So we threw some money in there as well. Other, um, support costs, approximately fourteen-four. That's a mix of, um, of gas money for mileage, a new laptop for GIS, um, food costs for the comp plan continuation. We threw some of that in there. Just various needs, just little, I'll call it nickel and dime stuff that we need to, needed to account for. Uh, and the last three items, um, we're wanting to reclassify, um, our GIS analyst, which is Steve, to a GIS manager. Our GIS tech, which is Chad Ramos, to an analyst. And, um, reclassify Debbie from a planning tech to a project development coordinator. They're already doing all these jobs. And they have, they've taken on a lot of extra responsibility that is not part of their job description. And so these reclassifications, um, effectively give them the pay that they quite frankly deserve. Um, and, and the last one, um, I threw in an extra, well, I said six, but I guess this is with the benefits and all that, following receiving my AICP, an increase in pay. So, any questions?
I have a question, uh, for Scott. Um, why is the, why is the comprehensive plan on theirs when council requested it? Like, I, I don't want to see them have to cover an expense that I think really is long overdue and that we, I know as council wanted to move forward with.
You're talking about the economic development plan?
Yes.
That, that's the-
Oh, it's not the same thing?
Yeah, it's, it's a different plan.
Yeah, sorry.
The, the comp plan's in this year's budget.
Correct. Right.
Well, it'll actually straddle this, this fiscal year and next fiscal year. It is the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure why it's called the economic development plan in this budget. But, um, basically, it's the same money. It's general fund, the general fund, it's a line item. It'll help Will and I keep track of expenditures. If it's in our budget, then we can, you know, make sure that they're doing their, you know, they're meeting their goals and we're paying accordingly, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we didn't, you guys weren't covering that.
I appreciate it.
All right, then I was misunderstood. Thank you.
That's definitely a great question. Uh, I just want to make sure that, as a council, we keep in mind that this is not really for the department to worry about the comprehensive plan, so that we, we know where to tie those dollars into. So, great question. Thank you.
Okay, so the, the economic development request was for an economic development strategic plan. And we have a comp plan that's in this year's budget for two hundred and fifty, I think, or is it more?
It's, it's a hundred and fifty.
It's a hundred and fifty this year, and then next year it's three sixty?
Yeah, we're adding approximately three sixty to continue the comp plan.
So we're looking at three sixty plus one fifty for the comp plan?
Three sixty plus one fifty-five.
Yes, sir.
Can we put that into the streets plan? Because I, I know we'll get our money back on that.
A big, a big portion of what Verdinity's doing though, that we're super excited about, is the, uh, financial modeling when it comes to land uses and how that integrates into appropriate decisions to be made, so.
Can, um, you please tell me their current budget?
For the planning department?
Yes, please.
Eight hundred and nineteen thousand.
Thank you.
Just really quickly while we're on the comp plan subject, so this next year involves a full code rewrite as well, correct? And that's partially why the additional expense?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. This is not just a comp plan. This is a, we're at, we asked them to give us an estimate based on a full code rewrite on the heels of the comp plan. We, we want a comprehensive package, and the cost does account for that, so.
So I, I hope you all caught that. It's, this includes a full code rewrite in this next year.
Oh, okay, so it's not five, a hundred million dollars for half, five, half the year?
Not, not just for comp planning, this is a code rewrite. That's the expense for the rewrite. Yeah.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, any other questions for Will? Okay, Chief Barnett?
Thank you, yes, sir, Jeff Barnett, chief of police, for the record. As we get started on our budget, uh, the first thing I'd like to point out at the top of our, our list here is that our twenty twenty-three meeting confer is underway. So this budget presentation is without any information that would be related to that. I've been involved in the meetings, but those negotiations are ongoing, and obviously they take approval by both the Law Enforcement Association as well as the city council. So it would be premature to have any of that, that information in here at this point. Uh, you'll find in our budget that we have thirty-seven and a half new positions that would be requested for our police department. Uh, we have some, uh, equipment, a few reclassifications, vehicles and software and, and heavy equipment. Obviously, that meet and confer information is to be determined. You will see that we are requesting eight patrol officers. This is to fund the, the power shift positions that were from the twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen staffing study. The, uh, firm indicated that our busiest peak hours of the day are in the afternoon and the early eve, well, in the evening hours till shortly after midnight, and they suggested a power shift to provide, uh, peak staffing during those levels to match the call for service volume. The, next, you will see four sergeants. Two of those are to manage those two power shifts. Each shift in our department is supervised by a sergeant. And then you will see one sergeant for the criminal investigation division. We currently only have one sergeant, and I believe he's directly supervising fourteen direct subordinates. And there are three different divisions within his criminal investigation division. You have your detectives, you have your property and evidence technicians, and you have your victim services unit. So that's a broad scope for one sergeant to supervise and the complexity of their cases. So we would be asking for one sergeant for CID, the two power shift sergeants, and then one sergeant you see there for a tactical sergeant. I kind of need to explain that one a little bit more, because that's a new one, maybe the first time that you've heard of that one. We are members and active participants on the Hayes County Regional SWAT team. For many years, Hayes County and San Marcos covered that bill through their personnel with resources and salaries and overtime and all of the equipment. As Kyle has grown into a much larger city with much different needs, uh, they ask us to submit members to that team. We currently have three active members that are on the tactical team. And then we also have members that are assigned to the crisis negotiation team. Some may call it hostage negotiation team, they're negotiators. Uh, so we are now contributing to that with staffing. And I will say that their call volume is increasing, uh, with the nature of our job. Where our tactical teams are being called and dispatched more than ever before in Hayes County and adjacent counties as they rely on Hayes County's expertise. This would allow our senior SWAT person, who is a sergeant, to focus more duties with that team as we, as we already take on a more administrative role for that team. Uh, we started out as members and operators at the entry level, and we've progressed through the responsibility of leadership on the SWAT team. So we're asking to be able to account for that time that that sergeant currently spends away from his duties with us and spends those with the SWAT team for both training and application. The next are four corporal positions. Those are currently being discussed. It's probably the only item in here that I, I put in here because the department wants them, um, with or without me to confer. Four corporals, that would be to cover one for each patrol shift. Those are entry-level supervisor positions, and they report directly to a sergeant. When sergeants take off for vacation or training or court duties or, or whatever they may miss their shift for, that leaves the shift unsupervised. This would give us an entry-level supervisor to still maintain some supervision for our patrol staff. We're asking for two lieutenants. One of those would be over the criminal investigation division, which is a long time coming. The last two budgets, we've, uh, discussed those at that position at length and narrowly missed getting tho, that much-needed lieutenant. The other would be a lieutenant over the special services and the professional standards and community engagement divisions. I'm asking for two detectives, one to manage the growth of cases and the, the volume of work in that division. And then also one more to become a computer crimes and computer technology expert. Uh, as you can imagine, technology is ever-increasing in our field of work and having someone who is an absolute expert in obtaining data from cell phones, computers and other technology, as well as to use computer technology for crimes against children and internet-related crime. Two traffic officers to increase our efforts with DWI enforcement and the, the volume of traffic complaints that we all get from our community with the ever-increasing traffic that we talked about earlier tonight. One K-nine police officer, we spoke at length about that last year. We wanted to at least give you that to consider. We think it's a very valuable position. Uh, the presence of illegal drugs in our community continues to grow as our population grows. And as we have all witnessed, an significant increase in overdoses and illegal drug activity in the central Texas area. You can catch that Travis County's talking about a, an epidemic in their community and a health, uh, emergency from all of the overdoses, and we've had our share here in Kyle as well in recent months. We've, uh, each year we conduct about ninety full investigations on applicants from all of our different positions within the police department. As you can imagine, regardless of your position in the police department, you must have a full police background. Because you're inside the police department, you're around police computers and radio traffic. So all of our positions get a full police background. And, uh, we do that now with part-time work from various employees throughout the department. And we've now reached a significant number where we need to have a full-time employee doing recruiting and background investigations for all the different divisions in, in the police department. As in years past, we've talked about changing some of our positions from sworn to civilian. This is the training coordinator position. As we move forward with the recognition program, part of that comes with our new police facility. As you know, we've been unable to achieve the recognition from the Texas Police Chiefs Association because our facility did not meet the standards. Also, as part of that, you have to have a robust training program and a coordinator to manage all of the records. So we're proposing this year, as we move into the new police department for next year, to have that training coordinator in position to help us with the recognition program offered by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Two telecommunications added for the call volume and operations. We're asking for the neighborhood services division supervisor again this year. As you know, our police department is generally, uh, divided into three major categories. We have emergency nine-one-one services, we have police services, and then we have other community services, such as animal control and code enforcement. The neighborhood services division would be a new division within the police department, and this supervisor would be a single supervisor over animal control and code enforcement. You will see items thirteen and fourteen below where we're asking for two more code enforcement officers and two additional animal control officers. If all of these positions were funded, that would give that position, that would give that, uh, division, uh, about eight employees to supervise, eight total to supervise. Uh, they currently report to a police sergeant, who is also well-otasked with a number of officers under his command. Number fifteen would be the administrative assistant HR specialist that we requested last year. As you know, Ms. Laura Hernandez here in the room, she has been our single administrative personnel, uh, for many years. We now have one hundred employee positions at the police department. She's been doing the payroll, the accounting, and the HR, and the administrative assistant duties. Uh, we've been working to separate those out so that we make sure we accomplish everything that we're supposed to manage from a T-CO perspective. And we need the HR specialist now to help us maintain the files and onboard and train new employees. The next one is converting a, or adding the fleet manager and equipment procurement technician. We call those a quartermaster. We call them quartermasters in the police department. This would be converting the position from a police position to a civilian position at a lower pay rate. And we've talked about that one for several years as well. The records compliance custodian technician would help us, uh, manage our records from dispatch. So there's an ever-evolving situation that's happening in the dispatch community. Many years ago, when we would file cases as a police department with the district attorney's office, very rarely were recordings and computer information necessary from the police dispatch center. And very rarely would a dispatcher ever have to testify in court. It would only be under the most severe circumstances that a dispatcher, who may have overheard some very, uh, important information, would they have to appear in court and wait their turn to testify. That is not the case any longer. Almost every case we get, they send a subpoena for every person who was involved in that case, no matter how small or how big. Which means the person in dispatch, who is a dispatcher that collects these records and serves as the- that collects these records and serves as the custodian has to go and appear in court. That happens multiple times per week. If we continue to use our dispatchers for that, there will come a time when most of our dispatchers are sitting outside the courtroom waiting on their turn to testify, and they will not be in the Emergency Dispatch Center. We're asking here to designate a custodian of the dispatch records and let that person be the primary point of contact for the District Attorney's Office. We're asking for one additional records specialist to handle the workload and volume as we move into the new police department. We're asking for one records clerk and one part-time receptionist to help us cover the front window. This goes along with the new Public Safety Center. As you know, we're going to have a variety of offices, and there will be a large number of visitors that come there seeking to meet with different staff members throughout the city. So our front window is going to get a lot busier than it is now because of all of the traffic that will come into that building. We need somebody to cover the window and not have a side duty of preparing records for the District Attorney's Office and filing, so it comes along with a new PD. You'll see some items in here related to improving the working relationship, our dispatch, for dispatch overtime and shift differential. Here's their request. Years ago, the dispatchers worked twelve-hour shifts. They would work two on, three off, two on, two off. They're asking to return to their twelve-hour shift rotation. They had to get away from that years ago because of the overtime requirement. Based on the dispatcher's schedule, when you work that type of rotation, you work what's called a short week and a long week. In the short week, you work thirty-six hours, and in the long week, you work, I think it's forty-eight hours. When you work those forty-eight hours, you would be by federal law required to get overtime for your eight hours, and you would have a short week on your thirty-six. The difference to allow that plus shift differential would amount to about fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars, and it would allow them to return as they want and the police department would want to work a twelve-hour shift instead of having to work shifts now where they work four and a half, sometimes five and a half days, and they have to, they take off for their lunch break mandatorily, and then they come in and work a few hours one day during the period just to make up their missing hours. So it really, it's not a comfortable schedule for them, and the twelve-hour shift also allows them to work in pair with the police shift for which they dispatch. So a lot of different benefits out of that, and the shift differential would cover those who work night shift. It is no longer easy to find people who desire to work overnight, night shift in the dispatch center, and this would help us for retention and keeping people happier on the night shift. Radios, this is a big-ticket item. Our current police handheld and mobile radios are in the process of becoming obsolete. They're not going to go obsolete next year or the year after or the year after, but we need to think for the planning purposes. The number that you see before you would replace all of our handheld radios that need to be replaced because we have some of them that are already the new model and would replace all the necessary mobile radios. We did explore with LCRA, our radio supplier, if we could break this, if we could place the order and then make the payments over a two- or three-year period, but they're not structured that way. But we could certainly structure that in the budget. What you have before you right now is an all-in replacement cost for one year, but we could certainly try to structure that over two or three years and replace the radios based on importance. The next item is related to the new police department. These are the dispatch consoles that we would be placing in our Emergency Dispatch Center should they be needed for dispatch personnel. The next item is an upgrade of our current body cameras, in-car cameras, and tasers. The company that we call Axon provides all of those services plus the cloud-based storage for all of our videos, which amounts to a lot of data. So this would, with the additional eighty-six thousand dollars, we would be able to increase our product, replace all of our body cameras, all of our in-car cameras and tasers with the newest and latest greatest equipment plus software services. Number twenty-seven is a conglomeration. I can separate those out here for you in just a second because I have them on a slide in front of me for various software packages. Number twenty-eight, you see the K-9 program support cost at nineteen thousand dollars. We may be able to keep that even lower. We estimate it high. We may be able to get the dog for free. Many military programs will offer the K-9 with training for free to agencies, but we priced it out just in case we couldn't find that. The Vero Crash Program is a crash and crime scene diagramming software that will diagram crime scene and fatality accidents, and it will do it much more quickly. It can diagram an accident scene sometimes in as little as five minutes. The importance to the community is if we have a fatality accident on a major roadway or the interstate, instead of six to eight hours of closure of an interstate or four hours of closure, we can probably do the work in one hour or less with this, with this new additional software, plus it gives you two or three D visual that you can use to present in court. Replacement leased vehicles, you see at ten, those are the ones that need to be replaced based on their milaging out of either our current lease program or they've reached end of life, so those are current vehicles. Item thirty-one is new leased vehicles at nineteen. That is entirely based on the positions that you add to the department. So if you go back to the other positions that we asked for, depending on which police officers, which detectives, which animal control and code enforcement that you may include in the budget, we would come back to this line item and adjust that appropriately. But that's an all-in number if you gave us every position that we had on the previous slide. The next item is item thirty-two, Parks Trail Special Utility Vehicles. This is two. This is all-in with trailers, lights, radios, equipments, fire extinguishers, backboards, medical bags, and everything that you would want on an emergency utility vehicle. We plan to use these on the trail system, we plan, as we patrol that. We plan to use these at all of the different events that we have, whether it be the Fourth of July, the Pi, the Pi and the Sky Festival, and the long list of things where the police department participates. Additionally, it will help us look for lost people, lost children, conduct searches for people who have fled on foot from police custody, any such searches, but it's an all-in price as well, includes the trailers if necessary as well. I can break down the various other types of equipment. I'm not sure if you want me, if you want me to dive into the specifics of the seventy-six, but I have the list of that totality, but I can tell you that it is items related to the one I mentioned earlier, the software upgrades that we need to keep our software items moving forward or upgrading them. I'll hit the, I'll hit the big ones if you'd like, or do you want me to start?
You could email those to us, to the council.
I sure can, I have the whole list, yes, sir. For both, for both of those two. Yes.
Real quick, Chief, if you were to add, if you were to get the two detectives, would one be, could one be allocated just to property theft? I think the other detectives handle most of the caseloads, and adding some help to them would be great, but I'd love to see one dedicated to property theft because I think that's the one area that gets kind of forgotten about throughout cities.
We could, absolutely. So, so right now, we have to prioritize the detectives' time. Most of their time is spent on property crimes, I mean, on persons crimes.
Yeah.
What we would do with this new structure, including the new sergeant, is we would divide CID into two major divisions. You would have crimes against property on one half and crimes against persons on the other half, and that way you would have two focused units to, to separate their duties and continue to focus on property crimes. Yes, sir.
The, my next one is traffic officers adding two. What do we currently have right now?
You currently have one sergeant and you have three motor officers.
Okay, and we sometimes bring them off to patrol, correct?
We do, yes.
So I'd love to see that division stay solely into traffic with the increase of bad habits on, throughout the city and the increase of population. I just feel like we, we need to really address that, and seeing them being dedicated to that one area and staying in that area would probably benefit the citizens here. Visibility would be important.
Yes, sir.
So, all right, and the next one would be code enforcement. So we, right now, we have two technical, two code enforcement officers, correct? We'd be doubling that to four, and that's part of the city's compliance program, correct?
Yes, sir, part of our beautification program. So the code enforcement officers, kind of a higher level of skill and certification with the state. You see that we've asked for code enforcement technicians. It's one step below those code enforcement officers, the difference being they would focus on your, your day-to-day violations, your tall weeds and grass and things that you can drive down the street and see easily. The code enforcement officers would work on your more major products, projects, without naming businesses and such, but places where we're having to focus our attention that are much larger projects that take a large amount of dedicated time, they would focus on that type of work.
Okay, and then just my last question real quick is that we added four officers last year. I thought it was my understanding they would do like a rotating shift where they would be on when other officers were about to get off, like two hours before the other shift got off. It was in the evenings. Did we add that division?
So those four officers that you added last year are in the academy right now. So they graduate in June, late June. When they come back from late June, they will go through an approximately twenty-week field training program. So they will do what you're talking about sometime next winter, probably January, February, March-ish.
I totally forgot about the year.
Yeah, it takes about a year, so y'all give them to us. It took a little while to get them hired and selected, and then oftentimes, we have to wait until the next local police academy is starting, and then we get them into that next local academy. So we have four in the academy right now with a, with a graduation in the summer, and it's another six months after that. So sometime beginning after the new year, you'll see those four officers do what you're talking about.
That's a long process, but yeah, definitely, we, that way we bring the right, right training in so they come ready to go, so yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief, okay, I'm very familiar with all this. So I can see where, I want counsel to understand that when it comes to number nine, ten, and fifteen, those are all a combination together. The reason why is because you need to have that recruiting background investigator because when you have applicants that come in, you have to do background checks, you have to do other screening checks, and then a lot of times, sometimes you'll get the applicants that'll sign up, and the next thing you know, you're waiting for them to get their application filled out process all the way. When you get them hired on, you also have to work with your HR coordinator when it comes to your pay and your benefits and all that. So once you get them into the academy, that's where the training coordinator comes into play, so where it all ties in together.
Yes, sir.
So you have all that there. The K-9 officer, I know, like, it didn't come last year, but now it looks like you're requesting it this year as well. And then, of course, the, the animal itself, I remember last year, Councilmember Bradshaw came up with a great solution to try to look at getting some grants.
Yes, sir.
To see if we can probably be able to look into that as well.
Those are the ones I think that will, that I mentioned, that would supply the free dog. Most are from the military. There are some private companies that will occasionally offer a, a private company grant, and we follow those as well. So our officers, they maintain a search on that regularly.
Okay.
I do think we'll be able to get the dog for free and the training, which is, it's at least two weeks, I could be mistaken, it may be, maybe four weeks, but we can get it.
And I do understand the section of my twenty-three, it'd be my last one, the dispatch overtime, because when you have your officers that work these ten-hour off shift, it really throws them off because it means that you'd have to come in from six in the morning some days, and then you get off at noon, and then you have to come in the next day at, from twelve and work till six, and it's just, and if you've got somebody that's out or you've got to cover them, it just really throws the whole dynamic off. So I, I think looking into the overtime and the shift differential will really help benefit, keep some of that retention for the officers that are going through those changes and keep them on a consistent basis because they need that time off, but at the same time, if they're able to work that overtime to get the extra funds for themselves and everything else, it would help benefit on that end. So it's a win-win on that end.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I've got.
How many full-time staff do we have in dispatch right now?
We're authorized twenty, and we have five openings, and we interviewed eight this week.
Okay. I guess that they will be moving to the safety center once it's finished, correct?
So that, as I've kind of alluded, I'm, I'm equipping the facility should council make that decision to bring staff there, whether it be on a permanent basis, a full-time basis, or whether there's a need to evacuate or temporarily move from the current facility to that facility. I will have it equipped and ready for use should the council decide to move that direction, yes.
All right, those were my questions, thank you.
I might just have one concern, and that is for the receptionist that's part-time?
Yes, ma'am, and it's actually going to, I know the one above it is included with that. It's a titled clerk because it's full-time, and it's, the other one's part-time receptionist. That one and a half person will work the front window area to accommodate phone, incoming phone calls and walk-ins and assist people directing. They'll have other tasks as well when the phone's not ringing and somebody's not at the window, such as permits and other registrations, but yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the records clerk and the receptionist are one person?
It's one and a half, so it'll be one full-time and one part-time. So we'll have one full-time who works typically Monday through Friday, eight to five, but they're going to get a lunch hour, and we need that covered. So we want a part-time person to come in about four hours a day from ten AM until two PM and also cover when our full-time person is on vacation or in training.
Okay, so my only concern is the pay is fifteen dollars an hour, and I know we can go to Home Depot and make sixteen, so that's something I think collectively we need to look at if that's a position that we really want to fill.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to.
Sure, I'll make sure I get with HR and that they put it in the right classification that fits the scale and such, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions for Chief Barnett?
Okay, Harper?
Final question here. Chief, could you highlight the additional positions or any other things in your budget that go towards our community policing initiatives?
Actually, what some of this will do, will actually free up some of our people who have that current full-time assignment now but get pulled away for other duties, and I'll give you a good example. Officer James Plant that you know very well, he's part of, he's the face of our community policing. He and Sergeant Bone, however, James Plant gets pulled in multiple directions. He's been one of the lead background investigators. So when I mentioned that we do about ninety background investigations, he's probably done half of those this year himself, so he's pulled away for that duty. When there's other things that he's had to do from cover patrol, cover shifts, do any assignment otherwise, he's pulled from that community policing. Let me get, let me find another one for you too that'll be in, that'll be helpful. So the sergeant that oversees the different division that I mentioned earlier, who has code enforcement, animal control, warrants, you name, I mean, I'm sorry, mental health and such under him. If we get the positions under him to free him up, he could join Sergeant Bone in their community efforts as well. Our warrant officer jumps in and helps with a lot of community stuff as well, as much as he can with community events. Let me find some more that would have an impact. Well, okay, here's a good one. We get the patrol officers, and we're not requiring those specialists to leave their community engagement duties and go back to patrol. That'll help them a lot as well. That'll help him focus on the principles that we put in place over the last twelve months.
Fantastic. And then I know you have specialized persons throughout your department that would do that, but ultimately, the goal is to get all officers engaged in some kind of community policing and engagement throughout.
Yeah.
So adding people, to your point, adding people frees up the time for not only those that are specialized to do it, but also training and other things for those officers to get away to do that.
Yes, sir, that's a, that's a very good point. Those patrol officers that we currently have, they're, they're running at, at or below what we would need for minimum staffing, which means they're going from call to call to call. They're not spending a lot of time with free time engaging with the community, stopping and talking, talking to citizens while they're out on patrol because they're actually going from call to call. They're busy, they have calls waiting on them when they report to shift, and they have calls holding when they leave for, leave at the end of their shift.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, you said all positions that have been approved are currently, at the very least, in the academy, if not already?
We have, we have five openings. We've had, we've had some departures from the department this year, so we're replacing some of those as well. We currently have five openings. We have several people in background from our latest or most recent test, and I'm happy to say we're testing on Saturday, June the fourth again.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Harper, go for it. That's not funny. Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. I'd also like to acknowledge my three division managers that are here with me, Warren, Tim, and Scott Egbert. The first page, if you see the, the thing that really stands out that I want to make sure you're clear on is the, the number of new positions. You see that's only seven, not thirty-seven? Just, just, I was just, I was making sure y'all saw that, clarifying, sorry.
Harper, Chief didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
He's going to ask how many you currently have.
You can go to the next slide, please. The first one on the next page, this is the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Division Manager. The task for our treatment operations and wastewater treatment plant division manager have multiplied tremendously. If you go to other cities, the, the treatment plant, whatever, it's a water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, they have their own supervisor, their own division manager runs those plants individually. The task is very daunting right now for Tim. We've recognized that last year, and we waited until this year with the plant expansion that's going to even further present bigger obstacles, as well as we have to start another expansion immediately after this. So I'd like to, to, to. So I'd like to 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 bring forth this other division manager now and split those two to provide the productivity for each department to be better. The pre-treatment program manager, um, which which is involving our pre-treatment program that we're going to be, it's on one of the other pages I'll talk about here in a minute. But this gro- program manager will take over that program. Once we hit five MGD, I believe it's five MGD, we have to have a program, uh, through TCQ, and it has to be in place and, uh, being run. So this is our part to stay ahead and get out in front of this. The pre-treatment program, for those of you who don't know, um, we have a company come in that might be, let's say, a metal plating company or or even Ausco, for example. There's certain, um, there's certain things that you look for and identify in the wastewater stream to make sure that you're not creating a problem for your own facility. We don't have a pre-treatment program right now. We've been working towards this. Kathy Raker's done a great job helping us out and kind of instigating this. We've even talked to an outside firm and discussed many things with them on it. Leon's been involved, too. So this is something that we're trying to implement and get moving, and it's a protection for the city in the long run, in the future. Drainage foreman, um, this is where we're trying to make our drainage department meet our water and wastewater street maintenance and, uh, street construction departments, making them all the same. That's all that is, bringing that up. Lead pump and motor technician, um, this is, we have a pump and motor technician. However, that pay is very low. Our pump and motor technician that we had, uh, left for $14 more an hour, doing the same exact thing and got a company vehicle on top of it. So, um, yes, we recognize that that is, it needs to be bumped up. They also need an assistant due to all the lift stations, all the wet wells, all the pump stations that they're now taking over. The gentleman, I believe, Tim, let me know if I'm wrong, uh, but the gentleman that he interviewed here recently, uh, same position, wouldn't start under $30 an hour. So, um, it's something that we figure if we bring in a lead pump and motor and then have an assistant, then we'll be more in line with every everyone else. Utility locator, um, this is a problem I brought up to some of the council members who have asked in the past. Right now, our locations are are tremendously multiplying. Uh, as the city gets bigger and bigger, more people are coming in and more constructions coming in, we have to go out and locate water and wastewater and storm drain utilities for everyone. Anytime that they put in a request and ask for these locates, we have to do it. Our two best locators are currently, um, our water and wastewater foreman, Michael Bristol, and, uh, Cyril, who's our water crew leader. Here are two of our supervisors that are spending the majority of their time out locating lines for the entire city, unable to do the job that they need to do. This is a position where we're looking at putting on somebody that's that's all they do. Steve Clemmons has done a great job of updating our maps and such. This is what they will do 24/7, and there is enough time that they could do this every day, all day long. Drainage technician two, um, this is another one in the drainage department. And remember, the drainage is separate, it's its own funding. The drainage technician two is making this the same as the water, the wastewater, street construction, and street maintenance. All these other departments already have these, drainage does not. Assistant wastewater, uh, treatment operator, that's another, uh, assistant out there for the treatment plant. We were gonna bring one next year. We said that we could wait and hold off until the plant expansion is complete. The plant expansion is about to be complete, knock on wood, and fingers crossed. And this will be that assistant now that we're coming forward with, right? Reclass of a right-of-way inspector to a supervisor. I have a inspector that the City of Kyle was fortunate to get. He was retired City of Austin inspector for 20-plus years. Philip, uh, he does a great job. All the rest of the, uh, inspectors all go to him. He is basically the, um, not-on-books supervisor for them. And he is also in charge of all the right-of-way permitting, uh, him, he's doing that all himself. So he meets with all the, all the different utilities, you know, for all the, uh, underground work that's going on in the city and the right-of-ways. What we talked about last year was, uh, making that position a supervisory position and taking care of Philip the way he should already have been, uh, for what he's doing. He is doing a massive amount, uh, and is getting the same thing as any one of the other inspectors. My hat's off to him. I appreciate him. Anybody who knows him knows he's well worth it. Assistant wastewater, uh, where are we at? I'm sorry. Reclass of clerk clerks. This is my assistant director, Julie Croxton, had brought this up. Talked about having our clerks reclassified to the administrative assistants, and this is so that they could get more in line with everyone else in the city. On-call pay, so this is probably a good time to bring up. It's not on the list here, and we didn't have exact numbers. So this wasn't on here, but I will be talking about it again and and when we go over this in the future. I I've come and talked before about the low pay, uh, of the guys in the street department, and, um, we were unable to hire, we were unable to keep staff. And now that the street department has gotten moved up a little bit, the water and wastewater, we're having trouble keeping them. Warren was at 40% of his staff for your water and wastewater. When you're taking care of city water and wastewater facilities, you need to be, you need to be staffed. The problem is trying to hire also, you know, with that pay. With what these guys are making, and you can go right up the street to sign it and make the same thing. It's hard to get people to come out here. These gentlemen and ladies, uh, are are state licensed. You know, they have, uh, continued education that they go to year-round, uh, very knowledgeable in what they do and very valuable to the city. So, uh, the, uh, the the thing that we would like to do, which we talked to Mr. Sellers and Ms. Amber, we've been back and forth trying to see how we can fix this and how we can better it. We wanted to raise the water and wastewater, uh, you know, up to the same thing as the streets we're getting so that, uh, we would have a better chance of keeping people as well as being able to hire them. Everybody knows right now with what's going on with the inflation around here, uh, and they're leaving us left and right. I sent email after email to Mr. Sellers and Ms. Amber, uh, telling them each one that's left us for much, much more pay. At some point, the starting pay would be great if we can work that. At some point that we've, and we have discussed this, is the compression needs to be done as well because if you have people that have been here, you know, two, three, four, five years, the experience that they have right now and they're making, uh, or what their knowledge is, they can go right down the road and make a considerable amount more than what we're doing. Kyle's great. I love it. But this inflation and what we're going through right now and the job, the job competition that we're facing is creating a huge havoc over here at Public Works. I'm not trying to get more money. I'm telling you all, this is actually what's going on. If you have any questions, I'd love to go into detail with you later.
Well, no, I'm gonna jump in on that.
Go ahead, sir.
You know, we monitor all the departments in the city. There is one division, and that is the water wastewater, uh, division, is the utility techs. And we are losing them at a much higher rate than any other employee in the city. What Harper's saying is is accurate. Uh, we did increase the streets' crew budget this last year. And that actually seemed to plug the the critical gap that we were facing. Uh, I feel like we need to do that, and I feel like we need to do it right now, uh, as a midterm amendment. So if we do that, uh, it is $33,500 through the remainder of this year. Looking at next year, though, beginning, because again, this isn't just a one-time fix. It is $77,500 just for this division. With compression, as Harper mentioned, it's $87,000 for, you know, ongoing. Now, the good thing is, again, we're in the water wastewater utility, right? So this is not a a general fund implication, it's it's a utility implication. But running at 40%, uh, we're we're at critical levels right now. So what we would like to do is bring forward a midterm budget amendment for, actually, I don't even know if we need to do that because we have salary savings already in the division to to cover it. So just know that in the next budget year, if the council approves this decision, we'll be adding $87,000 to that that salary line for these positions. So we'd like to get council's input on this right now. And before I do that, uh, I do want to say that the city's a whole. You know, we have since 2015, we have been talking about positions and positions and positions because we have been playing catch-up, uh, the city. We cannot continue to catch up to the growth of the city. It's just not possible. At some point, things will will get, uh, you know, back to stasis. But in our attempt to catch up on numbers, we have slowed down on some of the parity. Not to say that we haven't tried to address that, and I think we've done a great job. Council will remember, we did a three-year parity adjustment for civil service. And then we did a an in-house parity study for our non-sworn positions that, um, were not department head level. You'll probably remember a few slides back in the HR budget, there was a a chunk there for parity. That is for department head-level positions in ACM, right? So it, over the last six, seven years, uh, those are the positions who have only received the small cost of living increase, uh, but have not ever had a parity adjustment. And some of these positions, as we have compared them to our four comp cities, are significantly out of par. Some are okay, uh, but some are out of par. So you'll see that number as well. So what we hope to do in this budget year, yes, we know we need the positions, but if we're not taking care of the ones that we currently have, we're gonna keep, keep seeing some of this hemorrhaging. So you'll see that kind of as a a priority in the budget, uh, as we move forward. But again, this this, uh, utility tech is is a very critical position, and we need to shore it up.
So, yeah, I I agree with that. I definitely think we need to shore that up quickly. When we first, so going back in history, when we first started the, uh, street division, during that meeting, I talked about pay parity and bumping everybody up, and it went nowhere. It went on deaf ears, and eight months later, we had to address that, put a Band-Aid on it, try to fix it. So addressing this early, as as early as we can, it's actually kind of late. We should have already been addressing this as soon as we started losing people. So, uh, I definitely want to see this come, uh, get caught up before even the next budget to make sure that we're not losing any more staff because we, you know, it's it's hard to get staff members right now. I mean, you can go throughout any city in Texas, and they're short-staffed everywhere, every industry. So we don't want to be losing anyone.
So when we look at this, we we have to look at it in two ways. Is it the pay itself or the actual working conditions? Because, you know, we we can put somebody on a salary of $80,000 a year. But if this person is constantly having to show up on Christmas Eve or on a rainy night or whatever it is, and he's the only person there, or they're the only person there, that becomes the working condition there to where people say, I'm out. I've actually talked with people right now that I know that have made about that much, $80,000, $90,000 a year, but it's just the working conditions, the long hours themselves. You know, we have to look at it in those, in that concept as well. Like, what other benefits are we providing? And what other, um, structured type of position that, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be drawing them and retaining them? Because those are two things. You have your salary, and then you have your working conditions. So, you know, if somebody's always having to be on-call, again, you could pay me $85,000, $90,000 a year, but if I'm needing my time off and I'm with family, and next thing you know, I've gotta go handle this emergency to attend extra hours, then it just becomes draining. So you just gotta look at it like.
And let me, uh, just kind of illustrate the example. I wish we were talking $80,000. So utility tech one, we're paying $16.45 for the position. Our parity amount, just with our other cities, is $1,859. So so we are definitely low from a parity standpoint. Harper, do you want to address the the working conditions?
I have a great crew. I have a great staff. These, these men and women, they'll work. They're not afraid of work. They're not, that 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 that. I think for new people coming in where it's difficult, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but you can go work for a fast-food restaurant in the AC, you know, having a soda or maybe even some food during your work, nice, nice environment, you know? I'm just saying. Or you can come over here and you can be out here in 105-degree weather, uh, working hard all day. You know, a lot of times come in at night, being on-call, things of that nature. If you do that for the same pay, for that same $15, $16 an hour, you know, somebody new coming in's gonna ask, why? Why would I do this? Why? So if we were really looking at something where we're really gonna try to meet the market, we would be up at $20 an hour, probably somewhere around there. If we go to 18, like we did the street department, um, Mr. Rizzo was talking about, at least it keeps us to where the guys are still, hey, you know what? I like it here. They like it here. They like the, they like the benefits, the environment. They like working for the city. But if you offer one of my guys, probably the same with parks or any one of the others, if you offer them $5, $10, or in this case, $15, $14 an hour more, I, only thing I can say to them is, hey, man, I I I'm sure you're gonna miss you. You know, I I wish you all the luck in the world because I would do the same.
Because they're gonna take care of them, yes. But if you build that dynamic, like you said, raise the bar a bit more on the salary, but then you have that working condition, it also is your teamwork. The people that you work with every day, that you come in, it's not, and not, this is the same thing. Again, you could work at a fast-food, Buc-E's or wherever it's at, it's the same thing you do every time. But with this, you're actually building the character of what it is that we want from these employees. You're also training them. You're also making them feel like part of the team. And I think that's where you're trying to get at by increasing the salary. You also have, you can also have a better, improved working condition.
And I think we could recognize that if we're running at 40% staff, the working condition that we're creating because the salaries are so low is demoralizing, right? It's it's creating a morale issue. So pay does help the working condition because you have more people, more support, and you don't have the same person answering a call on Christmas and on New Year's and, you know, so forth. So I think, um, it lends itself, pay lends itself to both issues.
And that's gonna be a pay across the board because if I've been here seven years with the city and this new guy comes in and is making, you know, just 25 cents less than me, that definitely makes a big difference in your morale. So making sure we do that across the board.
That's the compression that, that's, excuse me, that's the compression we were talking about. Which which, the only problem with compression, which I am 110% for the compression, all the way up through the division managers, and I've said this. It's 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 a, it's a much larger number. Mr. Sellers knows very well. It's a much larger number. But if council would would approve that, that would be, that would, that would, and we'd love that, love that. My staff would love that.
Thank you, Harper.
Yes, sir. So the on-call pay, and I'm sorry, I kind of segwayed off into that. But the on-call pay, um, is for the guys that are coming in after hours. It's typical in most cities. We've been trying to get this for quite a while. It's not a significant amount, but it's just something extra, especially right now where we're not able to get the pay to a certain amount. It's a little stipulation, uh, you know, stipend that that it just kind of helps them out. You know, makes it to where they go out in these on-call, they get an extra amount, you know, extra each time they go out to do their on-call and their check. Where I came from before, we had this. It was a standard deal. If you have any questions on that, I can go to it deeper. The next one's a back truck. This is for our drainage department, and the back truck is used to clean out all the, so I've I've had Bo, Bo Grantham is my crew leader right now in the drainage department, or he's been there for the drainage department, go around each of the storm drains, uh, like, uh, the driveway culverts and things of that nature. Clean all those out, especially here in Old Town. The problem we're having is is the locates. You go to ask for a locate now, it's supposed to be three days. Heck, it might be more than what, two weeks? You're trying to get a locate, if you're lucky? Yeah, if you're lucky. So that really put him on a big hold trying to get anything done. Whereas if they can use the back truck, they sometimes borrow from Warren them and try to use it. But the back truck's used regularly with the with the wastewater department. If he had a back truck, then he would go through and clean all these out and not have to really wait for the locates because the back truck doesn't dig, you know, it just sucks it up, you know, sucks the dirt up. So, uh, there's not really an issue there with busting a line or something of that nature. Street sweeper, uh, as well as for the drainage, you know, something that, uh, come in and clean the roads and everything and assist. And, uh, the, another reason for this, and the street sweeper is currently under, uh, the Environmental Services Group, and they do a fine job sweeping and all that. We just find at Public Works, we have a lot of needs still for it. With a lot of our projects, we need a sweeper out there doing certain things and, um, you know, environmental stuff. They're they're trying to do their work, and so, uh, trying to get that one sweeper to do everything is difficult. But, you know, it is something that we're asking for. Just wanted to put it out there that it's something that we could, we could use regularly in our department, too. Just wanted to put it out there, that it's something that we could, we could use regularly in our department, too. Backhoe, the water and wastewater, one for each backhoe, I think, what was that year? Do you remember the year on that older one? Two thousand nine, multiple hours. So, you know, you figure that's, that's a backhoes that get used, you know, I say, at some points every day. They run for long periods, constantly running when they're doing water leaks and wastewater things late at night, because they utilize the lights of the backhoe for the people down in there working in the hole. So they just sit there and run in idle a lot of the time.
Could, could we reallocate those to a department that doesn't need them every day? Is there a department that we could identify that could maybe use those?
We've given a backhoe before, and we actually talked to Mariana about maybe even giving her another one. I, I, I really need Warren to weigh in here later if we look at doing something like that, because what we don't want to do is give her one that is constantly breaking down, that's been an RDO over and over and over, because then that's, that's not a good thing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. Next page. These are some of the things, some of the equipment that's been asked for by the division managers. A patch truck for the street department, concrete truck, you know, with all the sidewalks that we're doing now. We don't have the, I can't even remember their name now, Scott, but the sidewalk company that used to do it.
Polylevel.
That's what it was, Polylevel. We're doing everything back ourselves again. Abel and them are doing a great job of getting these knocked out. They're constantly having to wait for concrete trucks. And if you have one, two sections, a small section of sidewalk, a lot of times, they don't want to bring you. It's too small, you know, they want you to wait, and then you have to do several of them. And so this was a thought that Scott had, if we could get our own concrete truck, and we, we mix ourselves, you know, we get our stuff ourselves and do it, you know, more productivity. Pumper haul truck, I believe Warren brought this about. You know, right now, the pumping hauls that we're doing from various places, overall, in time, it'd be a good thing to be able to haul our own wastewater, if needed. If we need to run, and we have a spill or whatever, we need to pump out a lift station, you know? Instead of having to get one of these outside companies that come in to pump for us, we do it ourselves. And, you know, we haul it ourselves and send it off. So that's something where we're just looking at doing something in-house.
And is that the employee included as well, that would run the truck?
Well, you, you know, it's not, but, you know, we have CDL drivers, too, sir.
So you would just pull somebody off the crew? I'm just wondering, are we going to do another hire, or just use someone? Okay, cool.
Trailer, if you look at when we did Cortez over here, right up the road, if you look at the equipment that we had stacked out there, look at all the different heavy equipment that we had stacked out there, I was pretty proud along the frontage road, you know? But, you know, you got one haul truck that you're trying to move all that equipment there, so you're spending a day back and forth moving equipment, just to get it over there. This is just another trailer to help us to be able to move things quicker, faster, more, more efficient for the street construction crew. The zero-turn mower and the gas-powered golf court cart, the mowers for mowing out there at the wastewater treatment plant. The golf cart is, Tim got tired of walking to every hole when he was playing golf, and he said, "You want a golf cart now."
Wow!
No, sir. It's, if you look at the plant expansion, I don't know how many have been out there yet to see that plant expansion, how big it is now. They wanted something that they could get around, back and forth, to bring samples and stuff and move, and instead of walking that entire way back and forth. Tim was describing to me how you're, he said, "You're constantly having to go, maybe you have to go here, and then turn around and go right back out to that place, and back and forth." So that's one of the things they're, they're wanting to facilitate their operations.
And he's saying gas, would electric be better? Because now you're having to take gas out there, fill it up, everything.
Gas would be better.
Gas would be better? Or propane? So I'm thinking propane, gas, or electric?
I can speak to that, Tim Sanford, for the record. So sometimes we run many long shifts, such as yesterday, I was here till one o'clock in the morning. Staff's working twenty-four hours a day, so running any battery-operated vehicle would not be very helpful for us in that type of situation.
Sounds good, thank you for that explanation, appreciate it, sir.
So on the concrete truck, Harper?
Yes, sir.
To, I mean, is that, I mean, are y'all really thinking that's the direction you want to go on the sidewalks, to start doing your own concrete mixing and all that?
You know, if, if, if Abel's group continues at the rate they're going, and be able to knock out these sidewalks like they're doing, it's something, it's something to think about. We put it in here, you know, because we wanted you to see it, and we're interested, we are interested. Scott, if you want to talk any on it?
This is more for, oh, sorry, Scott Egbert, for the record. This is more for our own hauling, we would get concrete from local suppliers, not mix it on-site, they would already have it mixed, we would just haul it to ourselves.
So you just pick it up and, and you're, and it, like, you pick up the concrete?
Correct, it's like going to get base material on our dump trucks.
Yeah, it's like a delivery truck.
Right.
They have those metered, metered concrete, have you seen those trucks? They're metered concrete trucks?
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm thinking, like, it's a, it's a pretty big cost, and do you, are you actually going to be able to increase your output as a result of having a concrete? Like, are you going to be able to do more sidewalks because of that?
Right now, we're having a hard time with getting concrete delivered, because there's no drivers. And any of the stuff we do, we mix by hand.
You're doing it by hand?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, definitely, it's a win. You kind of made me worry when you said we're going to be mixing, I'm like, are we going to put a plant together? But no, if we're just picking up, that's great. I think it's a, it's definitely a must, because I've seen in the trades where people are waiting a long time for concrete trucks. You know, I, I see how many trucks are at the large job sites that are now coming online. So definitely, I think this would be a win for us when we're thinking about adding more sidewalks throughout the city. And I think it would actually improve output. So, yeah, definitely would be great.
And just to remind everybody, this is, you're seeing everything, you're seeing everything from, you know-
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, I'm trying to gauge where that is, and you said we're interested in it. And I was like, I don't know, that seems like low priority, the way you answered.
Well, well, as, as a council, we've really talked about the sidewalks with the Vibe coming online, how much of it are we doing in-house? So you've got to keep that in mind. So are, are we really going to be very aggressive with doing sidewalks, or not? That's what the question is. Okay.
Not in-house.
Okay, just making sure. Because I, I remember last year-
Abel's knocking out sidewalks left and right.
Yeah, it sounds interesting.
But this past year-
We're doing maintenance in-house, we're not doing vibe.
Not vibe, no.
So, so last year, we talked about, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because there was a conversation had about creating a crew within our city to do sidewalks. And that's why I'm going off of this conversation, was from that conversation. I'm not making this up, we're trying to bring out thin air, this was a conversation we had here in the city, so-
We've done that, right?
We have. Well, not vibe, just regular sidewalks. Right out-
Just maintenance, not building, because I, I heard, last time the conversation was building, that's why I'm bringing this up. I want to make sure that our crews, if they're doing something like this, have all the tools at their disposal.
They're forming, they are forming new sidewalk crews. Oh, yeah, yeah, so, so because of what council has done with our street construction, they have allowed the street maintenance to do what they're doing now, and get everything done that they're doing. So it's because of that construction crew that y'all approved, that they're able to do the things they're doing.
Just wish the, the public recognized that in the report, you know? But it's just a psychological thing, traffic gets brought into the whole thing, but our-
But go see, go see Abel and how much they've done, and I, we're, me and Scott are very impressed with them, and they're knocking it out.
No doubt, yeah.
The one-ton trucks, the leased ones, these are leased, leased trucks. There's three of them, one for the drainage foreman, and one for street construction, and one for street maintenance. And I think those are, are those, one of those, I'm sorry, Scott, those are trade-outs from the older ones?
Besides the drainage foremen.
Okay. The next one's new water meters, this is, this was just an increase, right, Warren, of what we're seeing? And it's a pass-through, that should be a pass-through, and not even a problem, because they come in and pay, so you get the money right back. I think they're just, we're just noting it. There's various other support items, there was a mistake on here that I talked to Andy about right before we started. It actually has, it actually has some important things on here, but it's about, it's, it's about a hundred grand more, actually. And there's laboratory supplies, chemicals, the TCQ permit is on there, chemicals for the plant, the UCMR-5 sampling for the BPA, all these are TCQ-regulated things are on there. There was the iPads, the Holram attachment for the skid steer, the microbial sample stations, that is TCQ as well. Heated cabinets for the level transmitters, that's part of making sure that our, our, our tanks and stuff, elevated tanks, or, you know, those transducer and stuff don't freeze up during the winter, I believe. Is that my right, Tim, did I lose that? Did I lost? I don't know where Tim is, good? Okay. And a replacement laptop. So I'll try to get them to make sure that those are all included correctly on the next one. The wastewater pretreatment program, I talked about that earlier. This is something that we have to implement when we turn a five MG, at five MGD anyway. The Yarrington and Lehman pump stations, chlorine feed systems and SCADA upgrades have to be done at both sites. So those of you who are aware, Yarrington and Lehman are where we receive the GBRA water. Those are two different sites that we receive GBRA water, which is what feeds basically all of the east side of thirty-five. Waterline replacement and upgrades. Warren, this was Pump House Road, right? Okay, this is an annual, we get this annual for putting in new lines. The next project they'll be doing is Pump House Road and Melinda Lane. The wastewater line replacement upgrades, it's the same, that's an annual allotment. That is the Schlemmer, isn't it? Schlemmer that Leon has going, and we've been working on to get, get, get that started. It's, it is started, and the money will come out of this year's budget. Street maintenance rehabilitation program, that's an annual, five hundred thousand. That's what the guys in the street construction department have been building all these roads for. Scott Egbert, as well as our superintendent Jesse Schreuer, have asked for a two-hundred-and-fifty K increase because of where they're at now this year, and what they're going to see that they're going to be capable of next year. They're thinking they can do a lot, maybe even more. If you look at Jose Edition that we just finished, and that one job that we were there not very long, I think seventy-five, what was it, do you know? About around seventy-five thousand in savings in just that one job in that short amount of time. So that's the, that's a reason for the ask to increase, so that we can do more roads, rebuild more roads. I believe, is that it? And I believe that's, that's all on my part.
Did I hear you correctly? So with item six there, is it annually, you already have half a million in there? So the increase is actually two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
It's a two-hundred-and-fifty increase, that's correct. That's what, that's what Scott and Jesse are thinking that they will need next year, if they keep going at the rate they're going.
I'm certainly all for that.
Any other questions? I think we've asked some as we've gone along, so anything else? Okay. Anything else on the department head side? Because I'm going to start speeding through the rest of this personally.
We're going to take a, we're going to take a break to stretch our legs, just for a minute. I know, we're not, it's not going to be a long one, but we're going to take, we're going to take a quick break, just to let everybody walk around for a minute. So I'm going to set the alarm, and I'll, I'll be bossy and bring us back. So, seven minutes. If you're not here, you're late. All right, just get, get right on it, let's go.
On the record. All right.
My dad says that all-
CIP.
It's like his favorite thing to say. I was born and I ain't doing last one.
So the, the CIP for the public who are watching, and I do know that there are quite a few of you, thank you for staying with us this long, stands for the Capital Improvement Plan. And we have listed here in our documentation, as it says, high-priority projects. These are projects that we have discussed probably in the past, have been on the CIP. Whether they're high priority for the council, they're just projects that we know that we need to continue to implement. So, starting at number one, I'm just going to run through these here. Micro-surfacing, Leon already touched on that. Street maintenance and rehab, seven fifty, that is part of the annual budget that we've been throwing into our, our new streets construction crew. We will, through the Payment Condition Index survey, continue to generate new lists of roads to maintain. Center Street Raise Meeting, that is for the quiet zone crossing, and is a requirement for the FRA and TxDOT. That's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Beautification improvements, that's our annual allotment of five hundred thousand dollars. Traffic control improvements is the amount that we have looked at for designing and implementing a, at least one new full intersection, and potentially others with signals. However, based on the council's priority of looking at things first from a roundabout or a single perspective, we're bringing forward those studies, we have some coming up on Tuesday for the council to consider. Additional lane improvements for I-35 southbound Furnage at Marketplace to Center Street. Again, this came out of the recent engineering that we brought forward to council. This is the cost to actually construct those improvements. Southbound, again, Marketplace to Furnage, where we have some driveways that are exiting directly onto the Furnage Road there. Definitely not a safe improvement, or, or safe environment, needs improved. Senior Activity Center, this is just something ongoing that we'll discuss as, as we progress through the budget. We do have that number still in the CIP for the design, the city's portion of design. Arts in public places, that is the request that the Arts Committee is going to petition the council as an annual allocation for arts for the program. So that, that is forthcoming, and will be a request from the Arts Commission. Drainage Priority Projects is our annual allotment, we have been spending those on downtown projects. Porter-Schlemmer Street has been our most recent project there. Quail Ridge Drainage Improvements is our amount that we have kind of looked at as really just rehabbing the culverts. We know that there is a future development project that, that may occur in the area that will hopefully resolve much of the Quail Ridge area. But this five hundred thousand is then to look at the remainder of Quail Ridge as we go around the, you know, the entire street, to see if we can't get those driveway culverts upgraded, as well as look at the outfall. Plum Creek Channel Improvements is our amount that is identified, that nine million dollars is identified in the drainage plan. And again, our, our drainage fee does not come close to, to being able to retire a project like this, you know, for debt service on this. However, we are still trying to get with state and federal agencies to see if we can't fund this as a federally funded project. Citywide Festive Lighting and Decorations has already been discussed with council, that's two hundred thousand. The Kyle Pool Improvements, five hundred and fifty thousand was, was discussed earlier. Citywide Park Playground Improvements, that's just an addition of a playground piece of equipment each year at a designated park. And that's really kind of, that's a very small number. Citywide Park Irrigation Improvements each year, we want to really begin greening up the, the city park areas by adding irrigation in each one. We're starting with Greg Clark Park, as you are very well aware, and this is an annual amount to add irrigation to each of our parks. Our plan is to bring purple pipe, meaning reclaimed water, to each of those to keep the cost down as well. Barton Park Improvements, if council recalls, there's a, I believe it was a twenty-five thousand dollar grant we received for a fitness station there at Barton Park. This is a new park that will be built at the Word Place Development. And then there's an additional amount coming out of a future special district to fund the remaining park improvements. Four Seasons and Brookside Park Improvements, that is a brand-new park. Mariana, just really quick, do you want to explain that one?
That is the location right across from Lake Kyle on Brookside Creekside, and that is where the pickleball courts are proposed to go, to be paid for by the developer, that area, and then the city would build a park.
Great. So, so much of that cost is coming out of the developer, the Park, Park Development Fund. Masonwood Park is a park we've been talking about, approved by Parks Board for a while. This will be right behind the Oaks on Philomena apartment complex, that, that little area, the detention area behind there. Yeah, right behind the, the mailboxes there. Park video camera system, something we've talked about for, for a while, and now we have a good price or good cost estimate on that system. This will add security surveillance to each of our parks. That will come back to, to dispatch and, you know, central system. Park Trail Master Plan. Mariana, I'm gonna have to look at you on that one.
Just before she starts on that, can I just reemphasize a park up off the end of BB Road? Just to maybe even consider it for the next.
The Optimist area. Yeah.
Somewhere around there.
You got it.
Our current park recreation open space master plan was approved in two thousand and sixteen. It is designed to be a ten-year plan. However, with accreditation efforts and then just as fast as the city is moving, we're trying to revise it and review it every five years. And to do that, we would have to also include the most recent citywide trail master plan that was included.
All right, thank you. Park restroom improvements, we've heard about that earlier. Building for Lake Kyle is, is to add an additional building in the, in that area. Ball field improvements, which is this Greg Clark?
That is for all the ball fields.
All ball fields. Okay. New dirt.
Dirt, players benches, dugouts, fencing, leachers.
Right. And then ball field lighting improvements?
For all the parks.
And when, can you go into that?
Going in Steeplechase, Greg Clark, so that all, all the other parks are able to be rented out in the evenings, not just Greg Clark Park.
Okay. So in Steeplechase as well, you'll have lighting in the, are you kind of just eyeballing the football field or?
The proposals for the ball fields and the big football soccer field.
Okay. So this looks like a, an annual allocation because seventy-five would just do a field, I think.
Each year.
Okay. Aeration at Cool Springs and Landbarger, we discussed. Inclusive playground improvements, I believe we discussed that, but is there anything more to add to that? Okay, very good. Krug Park property improvements, Mary Kyle Hartson Park and.
Tables and chairs inside of Krug.
Inside of Krug. Okay, so it's Krug, Krug building. Recreation Center facility. Easy right there. That one's low hanging fruit, eighty million dollars. Downtown mixed use building is our one oh four south cost estimate. Waterline upgrades and replacements. This is an annual allocation of five hundred thousand dollars. Automated metering infrastructure improvements. Cost has gone up a little bit. We had two point nine, we have three point five, and this is to basically retrofit all old meters with new radios and antennas to be what we call AMI, meaning they can all be read from City Hall. All right, push of a button. Water tank rehab program. Leon mentioned this not too long ago. We try to do one tank a year. We're about done with our rotation. We may have a little breathing room after this, but you know, we've got one tower after the Plum Creek Tower that, that we still need to hit urgently. Waterstone Water Tank Upsize, that is a, the developer in Waterstone is building an elevated storage tank. The city needs additional capacity for the area. So a million dollars is, is what we would contribute to the, that tank build to ensure that that entire area has sufficient capacity. FM sixteen twenty-six Water Tank and Pump Station, that twelve million dollars is from Arwa. So those, those are our federal funds to build the first phase of that take point from Arwa. All right, so this will, will provide a, Leon, how many gallons is that storage tank?
First tank is one million.
One million, first tank, and then?
Probably three million from the other two.
Then three million. All right. And this twelve million is first phase?
Yes.
Yes. So there, there's more coming after this, but that, it's, it's a great start here to taking water, to being able to receive water from Arwa in two thousand and twenty-four, hopefully maybe two thousand and twenty-five. Yarrington and Lehman pump stations. Basically just retrofit or rehab the pump stations that we have in that area, Harper, is that correct? Yarrington and Lehman pump stations? Is, is just to, to rehab the existing pump stations? Yep, with new pumps. Okay. Wastewater line upgrades and replacements, that's again our, our standing line item. Plum Creek Golf Course wastewater interceptor, we've been talking about this for several years and it's finally time to, to pull the trigger. We've got engineering pretty much done on that whole project, and so that's, that's gonna be great to bring a reclaimed line and a wastewater line through that area. So we're, we're excited about those projects. North Trails wastewater upgrade is a, you know, these are all per, per our master plan, but this is a very large wastewater line leading down to the wastewater treatment plants. We're currently working on finalizing the, the land acquisition for that project, and then it's the upgrade of the line. Same with the Four Seasons wastewater upgrade and really same as, you know, Steeplechase wastewater upgrade. So we're basically taking the, the main trunk line from the wastewater treatment plant, and we're trying to upsize it from the plant all the way up into, you know, from East Kyle all the way up to West Kyle, to where we get into some of our smaller interceptors. So that thirty-six inch line is, you know, think of a three foot diameter pipe. That is to convey the additional flow that, that we're receiving from our, our growth. Dacey wastewater upgrade to an eighteen inch. Leon, I believe that's from Indian Paintbrush Lift Station? North of BB to the Plum Creek. Okay. Great. Okay. Wastewater Treatment Plant Interceptor Phase One is three point nine million dollars, and then Interceptor Phase Two is two point nine million. These are both projects that are.
Running Plum Creek on their reengineering right now?
Okay, great. Yep, the, the final two. All right. So very close to the, the wastewater treatment plant. Quail Ridge wastewater line and lift station, it's something that we're trying to still figure out with all the development that's happening down there. We may not need this, to be honest, because development may be installing their own lift stations. Okay, Water Leaf wastewater interceptor. Yeah, this is the leg that comes from south to north. Will, will take up the, the Waterstone and Cool Springs flow as it drops down into the wastewater basin. Wastewater Treatment Plant disc filtration system, we have discussed this very recently with council, but this is something that, you know, disc filtration is something that is absolutely needed as we go to type one reclaimed. You know, so as we move forward in our reclaimed water system, we need the disc filtration to continue to, to filter out particulates, et cetera. And that will allow us to implement this, this reclaimed system. We are seeking a federal award for this amount, so hopefully we're, we're successful. And that is, that is currently in review by one of our, our senators. Wastewater Treatment Plant General Improvements and Rehab, that's our, our standing item to keep our plant moving forward. Public Safety Center Facility, there's our thirty-seven million dollars for the bonds, Kyle Regional Sportsplex. That's the twenty twenty bond, twenty twenty-one? Twenty twenty bond that we are still waiting on the, the match money for that. Plum Creek Trail, that's our, that's again from the same bond, two million. Oh, there it says, yeah, sorry, I can't even read twenty. It's like it's right there in front of me, twenty twenty. And then our Greg Clark Skate Park, million dollars. And again, on each of those, we're, we're just waiting on an ILA from Hayes County to be approved. And then once that is, has happened, we'll have doubled each of those amounts for our projects. So met with representatives of the county last week, and the, the documents are basically on the county attorney's desk. So that's, that's where we are with that. Our wastewater treatment plant expansion phase two to nine million gallons. Now, this one is something I want to just pause for a moment. Twenty-five million dollars. That is a, probably not the full estimate, to be honest. And it also does not include the engineering. Now, to go from what we are growing to right now, we're going to four and a half MGD, right? Hydraulically, we'll probably have the opportunity in this upgrade to treat six MGD, even though it's a four point five MGD plant. And it just depends on how awesome Tim and his crews are able to, to keep that water under treatment. But with that said, we have an opportunity and need to take that as quickly as we can, based on our, our growth, to now go from the four and a half to the nine MGD. And we have a permit application to TCEQ so that we can be approved to make that discharge into Plum Creek. We should probably be under construction for that plant in two thousand and twenty-five, based on our growth again. So that gives us several years to get to that construction phase so that by the time we get online, we're not, we're not strained again pushing up to eighty, ninety percent capacity, even of the four point five, right? Again, six hydraulically, but four point five by actual physical capacity. With that said, we probably backing into that, need to add some money into this year's budget for starting the engineering, you know, going out to bid, getting the engineering. Most likely, you know, the first year will be a million dollars or so, and then we'll keep pushing that on the back end, but we'll be looking roughly ten percent of thirty-five million dollars. Leon, is that probably more accurate? About forty million is, is what's gonna take to double the size of our plant. So we're looking at four million dollars, you know, plus or minus for engineering that we really do need to get started. So that's something that we'll, we'll try to massage into the budget and bring that back. So, yeah, for those who didn't hear that, so that, that's, that's a safe, safe year. You know, the sooner we can get to that, the better. You know, we, we've been very good to have things prolonged, but you know, we, we can't be pushing the envelope, right? So the sooner we can get that design started, concluded and, and construction, you know, the more safe, safe we'll be. The design itself will be eighteen months and then. Yes, sir. Eighteen, eighteen to twenty-four. The, the good thing is we, we did in this phase, we built the headworks, which is, you know, a, a big component we don't have to worry about next time and, and a lengthy and expensive component. So that's already capacity nine MGD. But we do have to build more treatment trains and, and, you know, more, more electrical, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe it will be quicker next time because again, the, the real complex build was kind of done. It's more of a capacity build after this point. But yeah, eighteen months is probably safe. Correct. Yeah, it'll be twenty-four seven. It will. It'll be in the enterprise fund. Correct. Yes. So we may need to look at the rate here, here as we, we get a little further. I've got fifteen minutes to, to get to the end here, but we'll, we'll talk about that. And then the uptown retail roads, just for everyone listening, again, our goal is on this next Tuesday to have each one of those vendors or, or engineering firms selected, approved to move forward to get us to ten percent estimate for July selection by council on which roads we're gonna move forward with to place on the August agenda to get to the Attorney General onto the November ballot. Next page. All right, that's the CIP. So now we're gonna go through revenues.
Hey, Scott, you said that of the eleven projects, the plan is to bring everything with the overpasses, right?
With, with the overpasses.
But I mean for the bonds.
Well, so we will talk about that with the bonds, with the conversation. We have two firms working on those projects that include the overpasses.
Maybe like a twenty percent funding?
Correct. That's exactly right.
On the ballot so that we can have that authorization.
Yes.
Which then gives credibility to our.
Well, we will need a, a federally required twenty percent match and a campa required match. So that amount at minimum would be added to the bond. Yes. So Pervez kind of hit on this a little bit before, you know, the city continues to grow and we, we receive our preliminary certified estimates and assessment role from Hays CAD. The estimated valuation of the city in two thousand and twenty-two is five point six billion dollars. So thirty-three percent increase from twenty twenty-one.
Value of our city went up by thirty-three percent in one year. That's crazy.
It's, yeah, one point four billion dollar increase to the value of this, this city this year, and that's a preliminary number.
It's not taxes, it's value.
It's just value.
We set tax rate. Taxable valuation is what the appraisal district sets for the value of all commercial property. And then we set the tax rate on the basis of the valuation.
Right. So it's, you know, from the ability to fund improvements to keep service delivery moving forward, it's, it's going to equal new revenue. So as we look at the next slide, new operating tax revenue at the current rate, again, for those who, who aren't aware, the municipal tax rates are broken up into two segments. The MNO, which is the maintenance and operation, and then the INS, interest and sinking, which is our debt rate. So we have our thirty-three cent MNO rate of four point six million, well, I should say the rate of, of thirty-three cents. And four point six million dollars of new money to be added to that MNO rate. The new debt number is roughly two and a half million dollars as well, for a total of seven point one million dollars of new revenue to the city. But again, remember it's broken up into two rates, and also remember, we have SB two that we always have to deal with, which is the, the rollback. That's the. Yeah, four point six million.
But that is not guaranteed.
Very preliminary. Now, in our history, historically, it's actually changed as a net advantage to, to the city's favor, but we don't know until July twenty-fourth roughly.
It's four point six million in new revenue on the back of how many million in ask? So I mean.
Correct. Right. Well, we'll, we'll get there. So the sales tax.
Ten times that much in requests.
Sales tax estimate is, is about two million dollars. And that's, again, we're being aggressive, but we have new businesses coming in that are going to hopefully be significant sales tax generators. So I think it's a very fair estimate. So there you see the, the budget of thirteen million dollars with actual collection currently of eight million dollars.
So we're talking about now we average over a million a month in sales tax?
Correct.
That is a sharp increase.
It is. It is.
For the year.
For the year. In two thousand and five. Yeah. It's, it's very significant and we're, we're doing very well. I believe Sam Marcus is over three million. Other general fund revenues is one and a half million dollar estimate. And again, those are fees, fines, et cetera. Water, I'm gonna shift now to the enterprise, utility enterprise fund. Water rate increase, our four-year plan with Arwa, you can see what our plan was. Ten percent in twenty-one, six percent in twenty-two, ten percent this next fiscal year in twenty-three, eight and a half percent in twenty-four. Our wastewater rate increase, our three-year plan was ten percent in twenty nineteen, ten percent in twenty-one, and then we were going to wait to see what the growth was and look at a twenty-five or twenty-six increase, et cetera. And again, that's continuing on needs and growth.
So Pervez, you said goals to defer the increase this year?
For twenty-three, our goal is to defer.
So we, we might be looking at no, no rate increases on the utilities.
We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that with.
I don't even know what that feels like to start a budget season with that. It's the, you know, it's normally like.
That, that's gonna depend entirely on the director's pay adjustments. That, that's going to depend entirely on the directors' pay adjustments.
Right.
So, does that affect our ability to save?
You just said that on the record.
Does that affect our ability to save extra for future wastewater?
No, that would be only exclusively for water utility, so the rates are separate for the two systems. So, for wastewater, we're not forecasting any rate increase next year, to begin with. Water, we were 10%, so our goal is during the budget process that we're able to defer it.
So, the, the question though is, for the next phase of the wastewater treatment plant, have we accounted for that in?
No.
We have not, so?
I have to tell you, these are like, although I do appreciate?
Right, most likely we'll come back with an increase. We're very, very preliminary right now, and again, but I said a little earlier?
But that'll be on the wastewater side.
Correct, not the water side.
Yeah, and that, that expansion?
It'll be a few years away, so?
Yes, it's five years out, so we're hoping that the system growth will help us catch.
Yeah. If we can absorb the engineering this next year, then we can defer still, but we'll have to look at?
To Leon's point, just some history, like, five, six years ago, there was a proposal for, to go ahead and increase the water rates before all the debt for Arwa hit, to start that, and we decided to take that money and use it elsewhere and eliminate it, and we were warned we should not do that, because you're, you're pushing the increase for, it's going, it's going to happen, and we could have scaled it in slower, that's what I'm saying.
We know we're going to need it, so why would?
Right.
Could, could we, could we scale this in instead of?
Most likely, yes, most likely I'll be presenting some sort of nominal increase, 3, 5%.
Right, little smaller amounts instead of the bigger ones.
Yeah, it's kind of a big temperature.
Correct.
That one's a sticker shot.
So?
Yeah, that's a sticker shot, 10%, but we could increase it gradually, that'd be better for, whereas, because now we can budget for it better.
Well, it just keeps up with CPI, frankly, even with that, right? Perviz said 8% is possible CPI increase. So, slide 46, you can see what the estimated revenue would be without the proposed increase. Again, we'll probably have a, a smaller increase on the wastewater side to, to prepare for that next plant expansion. Slide 47, new storm drainage utility revenue in '23 will be up to about $170,000 of new revenue, so that's great, because it's, it's really allowing us to, to really take control of some of these, you know, some of the 20-plus million-dollar projects that were in our storm drainage master plan. So, the summary, going to slide 49, this is, again, from what you have heard tonight, right? First, first blush requests from all departments, looking at new position requests of 87.5, just in the PD alone, just kidding.
Man, they're all coming, FDC.
It's just, right? Right? We're going to have to get rid of all the other requests, just for officers. No, no, we, we definitely support the PD's request as well. So, 87.5 requests, positions the new budget needs is $245 million. Again, those are new budget requests that you've heard tonight, and, and have seen where they've come from. Most of them came from Mariana's rec center.
Right. Yeah, 80 million of that.
But we do, we did see in the community survey that there's a strong, strong demand for a rec center, even over a library.
Rephrase the question, would you pay taxes for an $80 million rec center? And that number will change dramatically.
Correct, maybe. I do think that streets are still going to take priority in, in this next block.
Well, the way to find out is to put it on a ballot for, and see what happens.
And so, you'll see of that 245, if we look at slide 52, unfortunately, none of those road projects are in that anticipated amount, so we could be 200 million, I really don't know, and we, we won't until July, right? So, but we do know that there's many miles of construction anticipated, and just looking at the preliminary engineering estimates for the 10%, there's, you know, that, that number may not be too far off.
200.
Yeah.
Correct. Slide 53, new revenue and funding estimates of 213 million. Now, you can see is, that's broken out, there's, there's offsets for some of these, such as bond revenue, the GO bonds of 47 million in, in 2020, future COs that are anticipated to, to apply toward the wastewater treatment plant, TERs revenue, GO bond for rec center. So, you can see where those revenue sources are being, but they do offset those estimated expenditures as well, so you can kind of bring things down evenly as projects are, are brought forward in the budget. So, with that, slide 54 is the grand reveal, the estimated new revenues, 213 million, and less new budget needs of 245, so the gap in this budget's actually $31 million, which, all things considered, is not a huge gap. Again, many of the, the large, the big-ticket items do offset themselves in the revenue and expenditure estimates.
Well, and that's where, in the, the bonds, if you're actually talking about a 200 million bond, in order to keep from having to raise the tax rate?
The tax rate, yes.
It's going to have to come down, but it, based on slide 54, it makes me think that that's actually possible.
It, it could be, and?
Well, I mean, the school district just did it, but without, without a tax increase.
Right.
And they won by like 50 votes.
Well, and here's the other thing that we'll need to consider, as we move forward, looking at the, the rollback rate, you know, there's capacity, additional capacity in the INS rate?
Correct.
That could keep that tax rate the same, so, things that we're going to be looking at before we bring back.
Okay. I noticed hot's not even, hotel occupancy tax isn't even a slide anymore, it's, it seems like it's kind of just fallen off.
It's, it's really dedicated, dedicated to special events.
Our four hotels aren't really, aren't pumping it out too much.
Yeah.
We need some more hotels, yeah.
We're working on it. So, slide 55, next steps, you'll see we have all of the dates for our five budget work sessions. Slide 56, is something for you just to be mindful of, so, we're not going to get through this tonight, that's not necessarily the plan, to go through all of council requests, but these are the questions that we want you to be thinking about, so what are your, what, from the things you've heard tonight, obviously you're going to have to kind of take this home and, and assimilate it all, but which positions are priorities for you? Which equipment, operating requests? Again, we, we threw out a question about how do we want to arrange the council, new, new cost centers, and what that amount should be, so these are questions that the council's going to have to really think about. When we have our next budget work session, we'll, we'll ask and go through this in much more detail, and then, you know, we would encourage you to look at the household survey that we sent out, really good information in there, take all the requests that you received tonight, with everything, everything that you've heard, and at our next work session, we are going to ask for your priorities, right? So, this will be an opportunity for, for you to, to give us your feedback. And with that, unless there are any other questions, it's 9:59.
Well done. Can you, can you email this to us?
Absolutely.
Because I don't think we have it yet.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Good meeting.